It's not sustainable.
What's that?
Because eighty percent this year is less than eighty percent.
Than it was eighty percent last year.
Yeah.
Which is chilling.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lucy Bisson, and I welcome you this evening and call this meeting to order. Ms. Cox, could you give us a roll call, please?
I would be happy to. Shall I do it by seating order or that?
It doesn't matter.
Roger Dupree?
Here.
Mark Roy, welcome.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Mark, Michael Marcot?
Present.
Lucy Bisson?
Present.
Alex Pine?
Here.
Amy Smith?
Here.
Lee Albert?
Here.
Welcome, and Shanna Cox, I'm also here.
Thank you. And for staff, we have Shelley Norton, City Planner and Acting Director, Craig Tebow, Land Use Planner, and Linda Tripp, the Administrative Assistant. Okay. So the first order of business is the election of officers for the 2024 year, and I will entertain nominations, if you wish, for the president, or chair, sorry. Yes, Roger?
I'd like to nominate Lucy Bisson as the President, Shanna Cox as Vice President, and Amy Smith as Secretary.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay. And, let's see. Shelley, do we have to have an individual vote, or can we have a vote on a slate like that?
You've voted on slates before, so I think you can do that. I don't know if you want to open it up to discussion or see if there are any other motions, you know, to put on the floor.
All right. And any other nominations from anyone?
Can I nominate for just one position?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So I would nominate Shanna Cox for President.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Yeah, so can we have some discussion here on?
Largely, if you do that, we will also need to nominate a Vice President.
Right. And a Secretary.
Either one of us.
Right. So any further discussion on nominating other positions?
Getting acquainted with our new board for a second.
Yes?
Well, I think for the, maybe for the benefit of the public, and then also for members of the Board, could we talk about responsibilities of the positions, what we're expecting folks to do? Maybe that's more of a question for staff, just to have it available for folks watching the recording.
The positions are in our planning board handbook, and so I can read it if you like. The Chairperson calls regular meetings of the planning board as required, also calls the meeting, and presides at the meetings, and that's about it. The Vice President, or Chair, Vice Chair acts in the absence of the Chair, and the Secretary, with the assistance of the Secretary, the Admin Assistant, goes over the minutes and calls the roll. Really, all the duties that we do.
So I have a question about that.
Yep.
Does the Secretary and the Board take the minutes, or does staff take the minutes and we just review them?
Staff takes the minutes, and you technically just review them. Great.
Lucy, will you remind me how long your term extends for? Is this your final year on the Board?
No, actually, I've been reappointed to a three-year term.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay.
So, okay. So going on your motion, it sounds like we need to have a fuller slate to make that work.
Yeah.
So, let's see, would this make sense?
So we need a nominee for Chair?
Yeah.
Or for?
For Vice Chair.
Either, are there any other nominees for Chair? And we need a nominee for Vice Chair, and we need a Secretary.
Yes. And so, just really quick, can we do a quick review of who's got three-year terms? Like, where's everyone left in terms of their time on the Board?
Okay. I have three years.
Yeah.
Mark, who is our new member, is one year. Shanna has got one more year. Roger has two years. Alex, you have?
Three.
Three? Okay, because that's.
Sure.
This is, yeah, because you've just been reappointed for three, so this should be a seven. Michael has one more turn, one more year. Amy has two, and Lee has two.
Okay. And we will need to do this every time we have new members elected to the Board?
No, every year.
No.
Every year.
It's once a year.
Once a year.
Or if a vacancy happens.
Yeah. And a clarification of mine, I have one year left in my first full term, was appointed midterm and have a second term.
Correct.
So I'd like to nominate Lucy as Vice Chair.
And Amy still a Secretary.
Yeah. I guess we can do that. How do you feel about being Secretary?
As long as I don't have to take the minutes, I'm fine.
I'm also happy to nominate myself as Secretary, if that's permissible under the rules.
Oh, sure.
Give people a choice.
It's pretty lax.
Okay.
Does everyone accept their nomination? Should we start there before we win our slates? Is anyone like, ooh, because we would not want to vote on that slate?
Yeah.
I accept either nomination, and I will lead the way in the nomination accepting process.
Yeah, I will accept nomination.
Yep.
Fine here, too.
Any other nominations?
Okay, any further nominations? So we either, so do we, do you guys want to vote on the slate? Yes, Michael?
By Robert's rules, the order of the nominations should be voted on in the same order.
Okay, so in other words, Roger's nomination of the entire slate should be voted on.
And I also have a question. Have all the nominations been seconded, or do they need a second?
I don't have a second, I don't think, on the second slate.
Yes.
Do we?
Yeah, we do.
Oh, we do. Okay.
Dominations and seconds.
Yeah. So in that case, shall I call the roll for the full slate?
First one, yeah.
Hmm? Okay. All right, so Roger Dupree, yes, no?
For?
For your nominations of the?
Yes, for a slate, yes.
Mark, yes or no?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Shanna?
Yeah. Yep.
Alex?
No.
Amy?
No.
And Lee? Oh, no, you don't vote. You don't, well, yeah, for this, this is not an actionable, this is just.
She should, she should be voting.
She's not a voting member tonight.
Yeah, but I mean, this is for the nominations for the officers, this is not for a public.
I don't believe she can vote tonight, I'm sorry.
Okay, so she doesn't vote?
Yeah.
Okay. And myself, I'll vote yes, so that's one, two, three.
Five yes, two no.
Four, five, and two no's. So the slate stands. So we have Lucy, myself, as the Chair, and the Vice Chair is Ms. Cox, and Amy Smith is the Secretary. Okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on. So the review and the adoption of the 2024 Policies and Procedures and Protocols, I don't know if you got them last time, I don't know if you've looked at them, I have read them, they are the standard ones that we've had for a number of years. As far as I know, there aren't any major, any changes, are there, Shelley and Linda?
Not from the last meeting.
Not from the last meeting.
Although I did make a change to the protocol because it lists members' names and staff names, and there have been some changes to that, which I handed out this evening.
Right, right, this protocol, correct. Okay. And it's going to change?
Again.
Again, so it's, you know, when we get another associate member, it'll change again, so that kind of is a fluctuating kind of item.
And changes in staff, right?
And changes in staff, correct. So, okay, do I hear a motion that we accept the, we adopt the 2024 Policies, Procedures, and Protocol?
It's a motion.
Okay. And Roger raised his hand, so he'll be the second. Any further discussion?
No.
Roger Dupree?
Was that Shanna that made the motion?
Shanna made the motion, Roger.
Thank you, it was so quiet.
Sorry.
Roger seconded. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Mark Roy?
Yes.
Michael Marcot?
Yes.
Shanna Cox?
Yes.
Alexander Pine?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. Are there any further adjustments to the agenda, Shelley?
No.
Okay. Any correspondence?
No.
Well, actually, there is. You gave us, you put on our, on the table, the answers to?
Yes, yep.
From Public Works to some of the questions that, to the questions that I had posed regarding the LCIP.
Do we want to include your comments, too?
The comments are in here, and he answered them on the same document.
I'm just wondering if your comment document of where it does not apply to Public Works, we also want to include in the record?
Yes, I guess.
I don't know if you're counting that, Shelley, as other correspondence?
Yes, that makes sense, it was sent out to the Board.
Right. Yeah, it was sent out to everyone, and?
Yeah, just that it goes in the record?
Yep, okay. My comments, and then Kevin, the interim Director of Public Works', his comments, too, my questions. Okay. Public hearings, and I'm sorry, I'm going to mispronounce the name of the mosque, and I apologize. Masajul Salam Mosque, I apologize, has submitted an development review application to expand the existing parking lot and increase the occupancy of their existing building located at 240 Bartlett Street. Item was continued from the January 8, 2024 meeting. Staff recommends continuing this item to the February 12 meeting to allow more time for the mosque to determine existing uses of the site. Do I have a motion that we continue this item to the February 12 meeting?
Before I make that motion, I recognize there might be members of the audience who are expecting to speak tonight.
Okay.
And so if we hold a public hearing, then we, then it counts as the first public hearing, even though the application might not be complete?
They had one last, last time when you were not here.
Yeah, I see no reason why you couldn't open a public hearing tonight if you wanted to.
Okay.
It was a continuance, correct?
It was a continuance.
Yeah, it was continued from last time.
So we would open a public hearing and then continue it? Okay.
Lucy?
Yes.
So we continue it tonight, until the 12th?
No, 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 we continued it from last, from last time.
Correct.
And then to the 12th.
But nothing tonight.
So.
We're just going to talk about it tonight.
Right, I mean, I guess it wouldn't be a continuance to tonight. You have the choice tonight to discuss the applications, you could have a public hearing, you could have discussion, and determine that you're going to continue to make your decision on the 12th, or you could just continue it tonight without opening a public hearing and without discussion.
I don't think, you know, I mean, personally, I don't think we need to open it up to the public tonight. I mean, the public spoke last time, and I'm sure they're going to say the same, you know, similar stuff, or, and I think, you know, it's not much point in just rehashing stuff that we're not going to throw it on tonight anyways. Mr. Marcot?
Okay, I guess I was initially a little confused, I thought we were just discussing how to bring it on the floor tonight from the last meeting, so I asked if it was continued from the last meeting.
It was.
So the request is to continue it again until the next meeting?
Yes.
Right, to give the mosque time to work and staff to work with them to discuss changes or options or whatever to bring up on the 12th.
I mean, if it's helpful to the Board, I can tell you what's happened in the last two weeks since our meeting.
That would be good.
Staff met with a representative of the mosque, Nadifa Mohammed, who's here tonight. We also met with Dennis and Matt Terrio, who are here in the audience this evening. The mosque did some counting, not this past Friday, but the Friday before, of their parking lot usage during Friday. This past Friday, Craig and I went and counted the number of people that went into the mosque during Friday prayer, and the parking as well, so we could get a sense for occupancy currently. So we're at a point now where we just need time to kind of pull that together, back into something for the Board to look at, as well as for the mosque to have that information to see if there's going to be a change in what they ask of the Board. So we're, we're still, you know, we just need a little more time to put it in a format where you can have something that makes sense that we're sharing with you, as well as we have time to see if the mosque wants to provide any additional or different information to the Board than what you already have for your application.
Okay. And it looks like from the nodding that the applicant from the mosque who's in the room today supports the continuance, and is not here to be heard during a public comment. That answers my big question.
Okay, all right. Personally, I, how does the Board feel? Do we want to open a public hearing, or do we just want to do a continuance and let them speak next week? Roger?
I'd like to have it continued until February 12 if I could, so I'll make a motion in regards to that.
Okay.
That we continue it until February 20, February 12, though.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
A second?
Okay. Any further discussion?
Who did the second?
Amy.
Amy.
It's so quiet, you guys. Thank you, sorry.
Some real January 2024 energy.
Yeah, yeah, right. Okay, in that case, Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Mark Roy?
Yes.
Michael Marcot?
Yes.
Shanna Cox?
Yes.
Alexander Pine?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson? Yes. Okay, so we will continue this till the 12th. We'll see you guys on the 12th. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. And hopefully, everything you guys can work out, you know, whatever needs to be worked out. It's not me, it's not me, it's me.
Got it.
Good night, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Good night.
Good night. Okay.
Representatives who weren't here for the capital improvement conversation? Weird.
Well, I thought they might.
Yeah.
But apparently not. Maybe the fire department had comments on.
That's what I thought it meant for.
Yeah.
Didn't think so.
Okay. Review, other business, review of the Lewiston Capital Improvement Plan.
Mr. O'Malley, how are you?
Good. I am Deputy City Administrator Brian O'Malley. City Administrator Hunter was going to make a presentation to you folks tonight, however, a family emergency came up and she cannot make it. Our Finance Director would do it, but she's down at the Finance Committee right now doing the same presentation.
Gee, she can't make it in two places at once.
Exactly. I wish she could. I believe the Lewiston Capital Improvement Plan has all been provided to you, I saw some of you at the City Administrator's presentation on January 9, where there was a PowerPoint, so if you have questions, you could go onto the city website and view that on the city's channel, on the YouTube channel, from the 9th. I would have asked Acting or Interim Director of Public Works, Kevin Gagne, come here tonight. Lucy had submitted some questions to Shelley, so we had Kevin answer those as best he could.
Yeah.
So if you want to go through those, you want to look at them, if you have any questions, we'll try to answer them. If we can't answer the questions tonight, I will get together with Tracy and try to reach out to Heather if there's additional questions that you folks may have.
Okay. Michael?
I'd like to go through Lucy's questions one by one. I did get a chance to read the questions earlier, I did not get a chance to read the responses except the short ones here tonight. And I did have some questions and comments on some of the line items.
All right, so we'll, you want to read them, or you want me to read them, Lucy?
Sure, no, I can read them.
Okay.
I can read them. So, okay, so on pages 16 to 19, airport, the airport. I understand that airport management has undergone many changes in the last several years, but I believe that both cities must impress upon current management the need for forward thinking and not just the immediate needs of the airport. I believe that items on page 16, security, and page 19, the firefighting foam trailer, should be funded, and that the remainder of the items requested by the airport be denied. You guys have to realize, I just write this stuff down, I didn't realize I was going to do the? You know? Here we are. And?
And some of you may have had a chance to read it, some of you may not, that Lewiston Public Works responses, they have no response to this, because this isn't something that they, this isn't something that they.
Well, I didn't expect the Public Works to respond to airport.
I mean, any of these, any of these costs would be split with the City of Auburn.
Yeah.
Some of you may know that they've gone through, as you mentioned in your question, gone through a transition in terms of a director. Cities of Lewiston and the Cities of Auburn are still in discussions over what it's going to look like over there in terms of management, who's going to manage it, so I don't think I can give you an answer tonight. I mean, you can, you know, make that in your recommendation to the City Council not to fund those items, but I know that we're still in talks with the city, and I know that there's been a change in leadership over at the City of Auburn, so that may change some of the discussions as well, that Administrator Hunter's having with the City Manager for all over in Auburn.
Michael?
Having been on the airport Board, this has been a favorite topic of mine. I do have a question, I know that there's a change in leadership since my time on there. Do we know who the Administrator is for the airport?
It's Mr. Labonte.
Jonathan Labonte is filling that role right now. I'm not sure if that's going to continue, or if he's going to, because he's actually working for the City of Auburn right now, so that's kind of what's in flux, or what, does he take that role solely responsible? I think that's kind of what the discussions are going forward. I know the, the interaction has improved greatly, is my understanding, between the Board, the pilots, and, you know, the manager for the airport.
Okay. Yeah, not to speak ill of the deceased, but I was not a fan of the predecessor, and there were items that I had helped back then were funded, things like the fire foam trailer. So I would agree wholeheartedly, maybe we could have a vote on each item, and then some sort of wrap-up vote at the end.
Do we, okay.
And probably even beyond your questions, there may be other questions.
Well, right, absolutely, I mean, this was supposed to be just my two cents.
Right, well, I assume you folks will make a recommendation to the City Council that we forward and invite staff to the City Council once you guys have completed.
Well, I have a big one at the tail end of all this, but, but this process is necessary. I mean, from a planning perspective, we ought to be looking at how to plan the city forward. Sometimes there's expenses that do need to be made, and when you're financially stressed, you need to cut somewhere, so we're best to do it.
Yes.
Yes, a process point about the offer that you just had is, would it be all right if we discussed it kind of by bucket as it's laid out on page six, take a straw poll from the Board without having the formal of motion, so that we can form a recommendation by bucket, and if it feels like there's anything that we're divided on, to move that to something more formal, just in terms of ease and efficiency of getting through a large piece? We don't, the thing we really need to make a formal vote on at the end is a recommendation of which we've reached some majority agreement.
As long as when we go through each of the buckets, such as the bold headlines, we can translate, we can make cross-references to Lucy's list.
Yeah.
If I can just add that staff's intention was that this would be on the agenda for the February 12 meeting, where you would finalize your recommendations. If you end up having recommendations at the end of tonight, great, but you don't have to make that decision tonight, you have one more meeting.
Right, well, we can, we can perhaps start our recommendations, you know, as we go through the list, and Linda, when she goes over, she can maybe summarize it? You know, make the, create a list?
Yes, that staff will work to, to put together a bulleted list for you.
Right, and then we can look at that on the 12th, and then add or subtract at that point before we make the final recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
So to get us to dive in, and following up for Mr. Marcot's points, I'd like to support the fighting foam trailer and the hangar, because the hangar investment leverages so much additional funding. I struggle with the technical upgrades and pavement management program until there's a clear future of the direction of the airport, so my recommendation would be the bottom two in that bucket.
Okay. Sounds, sounds good.
So I have a question.
Yes.
I checked off two different things in the book, because I believe that your passage made a reference to technical upgrades?
Yeah, that was the first item. It's the first item.
Okay.
And then Shanna is not recommending that, but she's recommending the hangar?
And the foam trailer.
And the foam trailer.
And the technical upgrades is basically security?
It's security.
Alarm systems?
It's alarm systems and gates, so better?
Touch sensitive.
Touch, touch.
Right now, the gates will close on someone.
Okay.
If they don't move themselves out of the way.
I don't think, it does not say in here if that's an existing problem, if people are getting caught in the gates every, every time they use them, it probably isn't, would be my guess.
No, I think it?
If I could just?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a combination of the gates, the key access, the fueling, you know, just kind of modernize and upgrade that. I know with the fuel, they fill out like a, on a clipboard with a piece of paper, they write down, you know, the name and how much fuel they?
Yeah, the fueling station, it's been a rub for decades.
Exactly, so that's, those are the technical upgrades they're talking about.
Right, and that's why I thought it would be a good item to fund, just because, for security and for like, for the gas, or aviation fuel, or whatever it's called. You know, if they have like a swipe card or something like that, isn't that how they use?
That's what they want to do.
Right, and, no, 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 but I'm saying, isn't that what at Public Works, isn't that the kind of?
Public Works has, they have a fob, they have that type of system.
Right, right, because I know the buses buy, you know, get the gas there, and the police, and?
Reactors, a fueling station for the buses, for the Sheriff's Department.
Right.
For the Lewiston PD, yeah.
Okay, all right. Yeah.
And in regards to the hangar, that's going to be a multi-year project. I'm not sure that they need funding in 2025. They could begin the process and put a little asterisk for '26.
It's a congressional earmark, so I would support that if we didn't lose the congressional earmark by delaying. Maybe that's a question for follow-up, Mr. O'Malley?
Yeah.
Can I, can I just remind everybody to move your microphones closer to your mouth, please, or it's hard to pick up the Board? Shanna, it was hard to hear you.
Okay.
Okay. I'll speak up. That's never been an issue, Shelley, but I got you.
I know. I don't know why. Just tonight.
Okay.
If it's a congressional earmark that needs to be completed by the end of fiscal year '25, I'd agree to all three of those.
Okay. All right. Roger?
I agree with funding the foam trailer. The thing that I have a question with and have a concern is why are they storing the foam trailer at Central instead of at the airport?
I could not answer that question. I can follow up and get that answer for you.
It seems to me that if there's an accident or something that needs attention, the foam trailer being at the airport would be more convenient.
Right. Yeah, I agree. Alex, you had a question?
So, yeah, so just going through the issues here. First one, technical upgrades. I would be curious if there have been actual operational issues caused by the existing system. You know, sure, they may be out of date, but, you know, if paper on a clipboard is still working and we can defer this cost until a later budget period, I'd be curious about that. Then pavement upgrade, looks like there's some federal funding sort of tied into that. Again.
No. If you see an exact double, it's Auburn share.
Okay.
If it's more than double, then you're going to have some federal funding in there, like you do on the hangar.
Yeah. I was just reading here. FAA provides airport with $150,000 per year.
Yeah, but I think.
And that's, and that's fixed.
Yeah, I would say it's probably.
That's fixed and not contingent on this.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, yeah, again, if we are able to move forward on the project without risking the congressional funding, great. If not, not great. And then, yeah, echoing Roger's concerns about the trailer not being stored, could be used. And I guess the question would be, is, you know, if it's going to be used for other, other fuel-involved incidents elsewhere, and it's a shared asset that's being paid for partially by this city, is that for both cities to use it for other fuel-related incidents elsewhere?
Well, it's my understanding would only, the foam trailer can only be used on certain types of fuel, so it's the aviation fuel. So if there was a plane crash, you know, that wasn't at the airport, that was in one of the cities, then obviously you would want that to respond because Lewiston and Auburn fire departments don't have that equipment to fight those type of.
Yeah. So, yeah, I guess the question for me is, yeah, so, you know, in here it's saying fuel-involved fire. Jet fuel, diesel fuel, they're pretty similar from a chemical standpoint.
Also stating that it's for outside-the-fence hazards, that it's intended for community response for a plane that crashes in a field in Auburn on its way to the airport.
Yeah.
Which might be the why it's off-site, is that it's for off-site mitigation and not onsite.
I mean, it should be stored at the airport.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think if someone's inbound to the airport, four miles out and crash lands, I don't know that scrambling it from Central or from outer Lewiston is going to be better.
I don't know. I would assume they would store it there, but I don't know if, what their plan is.
Yeah. Well, okay.
I assume they'd store it there. I mean, I can find out.
All right. Well, we can find out where it.
It's in the application.
Yeah.
Details on how it would be used, I think is the question.
Yeah. Okay. Amy, did you have any questions?
No.
Okay. All right. So, all right. I had nothing on, on the emergency 911. So, following page six, emergency 911. You know, they're really, we gotta do, we gotta do it. And that's why I didn't put any comments because, you know, I mean, it's, it's got to get done and, and it's got to get modernized and it's really, you know.
Okay. You're talking about one page 22, because I'm looking at your question. I read it as you, you wanted to postpone this item.
I think she's looking at pages 20 and 21 prior to the ones you had a question. The emergency 911 virtualization and the 911 communication center.
Well, I think they, they put, it's my understanding when I spoke to the director that they're putting in the HVAC money only if it doesn't get approved that they're going to move over to 85 Park Street. My most recent conversations were Auburn is moving forward on the, their creation of their new public safety building. They've gotten some federal money. But they're waiting for our police station to be completed so our existing tenant can move out of 85 Park Street, go out down into Mill 7, and then we're going to move 911 over. So once they stop making that public safety building in Auburn, it's kind of has a domino effect.
Yeah.
So I think they only want this HVAC if they can't get into 85 Park Street.
Okay.
Does that make sense? You're looking at me?
I'm trying to visualize where 85 Park Street is.
Right on.
It's on the corner.
It's the old courthouse?
Yeah.
The old, yeah.
The courthouse on Park Street.
Yep.
So I'm being told that Auburn is proceeding with their public safety building. So they're going to want to be moving out of there. So, and I was told today by the police chief that the police department, Mill 7 relocation is supposed to still be on track for July of this year.
July of this year? Fantastic.
And the dispatch center HVAC is not FY '27?
It's not a 25 anyways. It's a 27 item. So that's why I didn't bring it up because it's, it's not, it's not for 20, you know, for now.
But the one on page 22, the facility is to do the upgrades needed to get them into 85 Park Street.
Right. Right. And, and, you know, I, again, my feeling was, where are, where's Auburn? And when is this really happening? Is it really something that has to be '25? Or is it, can we just say it's going to be '26 instead because it ain't going to happen anyways?
Well, Auburn says they're proceeding with it.
Okay. All right. So that needs to be there. Okay.
And the server is, is going to be, needed to be replaced wherever everything goes.
Yeah. Right. Okay. All right. In that case, then I, okay. Let's see. Whoops. Got to go back to page six. Okay. Transit committee. Well, that's a standing item that we've been funding $50,000 a year for a number of years for the transit committee. And they need to have the money there to, for the federal match, because it's an 80-20 match. And if we don't have the 20, we don't get the buses.
Right. So when we purchase, the city purchases a bus, you have to have the matching funds.
Right.
So do this little bit, little bit each time till we can have that money.
Yeah. And we're looking at, what, a half million at this point on the buses?
If we, yeah.
Pretty darn close.
If we go diesel, if you talk about going electrical, it's way more.
Oh, yeah. Well, even when I was on the board, it was like 800,000 for an electric bus then, and that was several years ago. Honestly, with what they've been talking on the news, that the cars, where it's really cold, the cars are not.
I have a Dodge pickup truck I drive that I put gas in, so it gets cold here in Maine.
Yes.
I think the technology has to catch up, and I don't.
I think, yeah, I think we need to wait on electric buses for the technology to get somewhat better. Okay.
We don't have a request for an electric bus, though.
No, we don't. I'm just saying that the cost of those is, is even more than the diesel buses.
Than a regular, and like I said, the, the cost of a, of a diesel bus is about 500 grand now, if not more. Okay.
You got, you got some questions down here?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Michael. I didn't look that way. Oh, Shanna? Okay.
So I guess this is kind of an overarching comment, but in the city administrator's presentation, she talked about the goal and the closer that we are getting to our overall goal of including operating costs in our operating budget and not bonding out things that, in an ideal scenario, are planful, budgeted, and could be part of our operating. I would flag as a footnote going forward that a $50,000 a year request towards a future, like a one-tenth share of a future bus, either we bond a bus and we plan for that in the overall bond program, or that we make the $50,000 deposit into our savings account for a bus and operational cost because we are budgeting for it in that manner already. If you could just footnote that.
I will.
I would also like to support buses. I just think that we can be strategic about how we do it.
Absolutely. Michael?
And from a different approach on that, I was going to ask, maybe Heather might be better to ask this question of, if this is an item that's been in the LCIP and funded, has she borrowed it? Has she created a reserve of the $50,000 each year since the last bus was purchased? How much would be in that reserve in this case?
I can say that last year, when you came off there, where we had several accidents, we had to replace buses. And what happens is when we get federal dollars for those buses, we have to pay back if we don't replace the, the bus, you know, to the federal government. So we have to, you know, purchase a bus. Our insurance doesn't cover it. If the driver's at fault, you know, there's a lot that goes into it. So it's, I think we had three that we had to replace. And then there was a cost with the supply chain issues and just getting the buses and ordering them. So they want the, you know, a certain percentage upfront and then to get the federal matching dollars. So I'm not sure what those are. That would be my financial advisor, the city administrator's question I can ask her that.
Okay.
Good question on buses. Do we participate in the Lono program?
No.
The Federal Transit Administration's Lono program, grant program for clean buses?
I, I mean, we buy from, through the federal transportation.
Right. They get a contract that we, you know, we sought to.
So I think the question I'd have is, has this, have both the cities considered this program? Are we looking at applying for it? It is free grant money. They could significantly lower the cost of a bus.
I know that.
I think this is a worthwhile thing to keep in the budget, like we need to replace buses.
Oh, we have to.
But in terms of increasing service and things like that, I'd be curious.
I know that AvCog, you know, there's a transportation individual over there that looks into the, you know, the grants and all that. But what was it called?
Alex, what's it called?
The, the Lono program. So it's the low or no emissions grant program through the FTA. Yep. I believe there's actually a statewide application. I know Bangor just got some money through that.
Well, I know we put in for grant with the state to get a, just one electric bus, and we were, we were denied.
Okay. So that is the Lono program.
So that's, it's got to be the Lono program.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Citywide assessing, this is to start assessing personal property for businesses, correct?
It's for the whole, citywide evaluation.
Evaluation. Okay.
Of personal and business property?
Yes.
Not real estate for houses?
I'm sorry. Yeah, that's personal and business. Yeah. Because, because that's, we funded all of the money that, that's needed for the, for real estate over the last few years. Okay. Okay. Economic and community development. Canal ownership, well, let me, what I did in that was page 27, Bates Mill cleanup. As I have stated in the past, I believe that we should be tearing down this building. I understand that Mr. Platts has an option until 2027, possibly.
2026.
Huh?
It's 2026.
2026? Okay.
It's 20 years.
Okay. I wasn't, I wasn't sure.
Out of the county.
Yeah. And, but the possibility of rehabbing this building has been going on for too many years, and it is time to spend the money to tear it down and clean up the mess and be done with it. And Mr. Gangyi commented, whether this is, the decision is made to demolish or renovate, the cleanup of the Bates Mill number five is required in both scenarios. And delaying the cost of cleanup only increases the costs based, increased on future costs. Based on the 1.5 million federal grant to assist, LPW recommends conducting, conducting the brownfield cleanup of the site. And I agree. I mean, we, we have to, you know, I mean, it's been 30 years. It's, you know, I won't say exactly the words I would use, but it's do it or, or, you know, do it or don't. I mean, this is.
Yeah. And Kevin can probably jump in, but I'm just going to add that, you know, the, the cost is, the last I was told was a little over $10 million to tear it down and a little over $10 million to keep it standing up. What isn't included in the $10 million tearing it down is, and this is where my engineer friend will come in, is supporting of the canals.
Yep.
So if we tear that down, the wall of the back building is right against the canal. So the, the original plans from those of us who've been around here, as Lucy's talking about, 30 years ago, that never, the cost was never associated with how do we keep the canals from collapsing. So I'll let Acting Director, Kevin Gangyi, jump in there.
And that's where the unforeseen, I can't go into more detail because it's until we get there and get a structural engineer to look at it, we're not going to be able to really fully assess it.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that back wall of the canal, excuse me, back wall of the building and the canal are the same?
Are the same.
So that's the cross canal that goes down by Fishbones?
That's the main canal.
The main canal.
Oh, the main canal?
The main canal. All right. So the thing is, if you just demolish down to the street level or the, the ground level, wouldn't that reinforce the canal, still reinforce the canal?
Those are scenarios. There's been a lot of scenarios on the table.
Yeah.
And understanding what the final outcome of this really determines what path you're going to take.
Now, should we elect to demolish the building, what's the timeframe involved? Do you, we have any idea?
We, we know. I mean, this, if you go back, I think it was 10-plus years ago, we had someone lined up, we had the construction, the demolition company was here, and then the city backed out. And I think we ended up even having to pay them several hundred thousand dollars because they were here. I don't think we've researched it that far in terms of the demolition and getting somebody, you know, to deal with this type of demolition with all the contaminants on site. I could, I can try to find out, but I, I'm, $10 million is an old estimate.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure it's, and it's going to keep getting more, more, more expensive.
The tearing it down.
A little more background on that. That's my first year in the finance committee. This is statin, I feel like, finance committee. The city council voted in June to tear it down. They got a contract for $800,000. Missed opportunities. What, what happened in the ensuing months after the city council was fully replaced, no, was a tragic event. It cost us $80,000 to get out of the contract.
I knew there was an amount.
It was 10% of the total 8,000, 800,000 that we lost. And they were not going to take down the portion, and I forget the terminology, but there's something in there, the boiler room or something of that effect.
Isn't that generator?
Generator.
Generator.
Probably the upper, yeah.
That portion was going to be left standing because of the canal situation.
Well, that and CMP still owned it at that time.
No. No. It was non.
Or the water company or something.
There's still, there's still power going through there.
Yeah. Right.
It has to be de-energized and decommissioned before we can demo it.
It's still going through it to this day?
Correct. Yeah. That feeds that whole building, so.
Yeah.
That complex.
And part of the reason, was that was going to be left up. But I, I think if it had been done then, somebody would have done something with that property by now. It's been 14 years.
Yeah. Mark?
So I just want to be clear. Are you saying that the demolition would cost 10 million plus? There might be, there's certainly going to be some costs with the canal restructure, but if it's refurbished, there wouldn't be any costs having to do with the canal to reinforce the canal?
Correct. The walls would still be there structurally as they are today.
Okay.
Shannon?
Can you speak, I'm on page 27. Can you speak to whether we successfully expended the $500,000 EPA grant that needed to be fully spent by 9/30/23, which is past tense now?
I cannot. I don't know the status that.
I believe there was some work done on the roof, and I know that they were looking to get some mitigation done. I can follow up on that of where they are with that.
Yeah, if you would. Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Absolutely.
If you kind of follow those bullet points down from there, there's your numbers of like the demolition's 11-4, the mitigation is 11-3, there's literally an act of Congress to put the million dollars that have been awarded to demolition, whereas we sit with a million dollars that can be used towards the roof replacement? That's how I'm reading it?
Yes.
I guess it's a big number. My two questions are this. One, what bonds have already been approved for this purpose and have not been issued? And is this a conversation we need to have relevant to this item? Because I, I am not confident that we haven't voted on bonds that might not have yet been issued and brought in the area.
And I will get that, yes.
Yeah. And then the second piece is, what's it going to take to make a no-go decision on this? Because realistically, we're faced with, we lose a million dollars or pray for a reappraisal of the million dollars for its demolition. I just, I don't, what I don't see and what, what our city is good at in many departments and other ways is a study or a plan for the cost that makes a recommendation that helps address many of the questions we're hearing. What's it take to get an engineer on site to be able to speak to the structural changes that would be needed if demolition was the pathway that was pursued? And what additional costs can be known versus estimated? And how might that be different than a pathway of saying, let's invest in the roof? Because the roof membrane and the leaking inside is not really a problem if we're going to demolish it, and we could wait here. Right? And if we're, and if it is the exhaustion of options that are currently out there and there is a time date with that, this group knowing that time date and what is actually relevant to pushing a decision-making timeline would be useful, which is why I asked about the $500,000 being spent. Also, what's the expiration date on the million congressional delegated spending? Because it would be very easy for me to say, let's put $800,000 or $600,000 into a full analysis, structural review, and understanding of the estimate of cost and timelines for both. But it's really hard to say, let's put money towards something when we're still not sure what direction we're going.
And I think that has kind of been on hold because I'm not sure which city council would have extended that option to Platts Associates, and that's coming up in 2026. So my assumption is that our city council will be kind of answering that question of the direction of that, where they want to go. A decision one council made, I guess it was 14 years ago, and see what they say. But I can get the information to you folks about the bonds and the money and the expiration.
For what it's worth to my peers, I would say that we hold this and do not issue the spending in this fiscal year. Revisit this in next year's capital improvement ban in a better context of other timelines that are asserting forces on this decision.
Okay.
That's just, and maybe none of this matters if we've already approved these bonds and they're already just waiting to be spent, and we're waiting until 26 anyway.
I don't know. I, I know that oftentimes bonds are approved, but they aren't issued. So I don't know if I'm sitting here. So I will have to get that information to you.
Sure. Alex?
Yeah. So our current, the, the option that we've extended to Platts, is the intention there that Platts would handle renovation of the building and the remediation or no?
No. No, we will handle the remediation.
So, so basically.
Well, renovation, he would handle.
Right. We would do a remediation. So we're not going to, he is not going to take that building if it still has all these contaminants and everything else.
Got it. So he has an option on it, and he's likely not to, to do anything with that option until the remediation is done?
Right.
Definitely won't begin building until the remediation is done.
Correct.
Okay. Got it. So, so in some ways, the option that's on it right now is kind of a moot point until this is all figured out.
I don't know that that's the case.
Well, we can't tear it down right now.
As long as he has it on.
I think that's why. I think that's why our, our economic team has applied for these, you know, the million dollars and other things to fix the roof to keep it standing at this point. You know, if Platts Associates were to come to us and say, I've got this great tenant, they're gonna do this, they're gonna do this, but I think it's kind of a catch twenty-two where you need the building fixed, but then you need a tenant in there, or then you're gonna tear, you know.
Yeah, no one wants to be a tenant when there's asbestos.
It's been an ongoing issue, as you hear, fourteen, thirty years.
Michael?
How long have you been on this planet? Nineteen ninety-one, Mayor Harmonix's first term, when he ran, we were taking over that property from the Tang brothers for back payment on taxes. They walked away with a smile on their face. It's called brownfield, not cleanup. We took on that responsibility. That's thirty, three years ago, or more.
That's what I said, thirty years. I've been around a long time. Okay.
But, so this is just the second item under Economic Community Development.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I didn't have any comments on, my next one that I had comments on was the Riverfront Island Implamation, implementation, I'm sorry. This is a worthwhile project, but we should stretch it out over a longer period so that we can spend less each year. Public Works response, the RIMP has a fifteen-year implementation schedule. Right now, there are several studies that will support this area and the RIMP. By investing in these studies and by constructing key elements of the plan, we believe will help secure federal funds and draw private investment to support the development of the vision for this community. Federal funds will help lower city investment and work to meet the implementation schedule. This may be more feasible in future years, but for twenty twenty, for twenty twenty-five, the seven hundred thousand is needed to have a viable project, will, will, which does not lend itself to additional phasing on the ribbon pan, path, I'm not sure what that is.
We, oh, sorry. You had a presentation by former Public Works Director Marion Brenchek a few months back, where we actually looked at design concepts for where the railroad building is.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
For continuing it across the bridge and over to the bridge that goes to Auburn, so it'd be next to the main mill building. So it's really that pedestrian extension, but also looking at extending the vehicular access, expanding parking along that area of, I believe that's Oxford Street.
Samar Payne Park, and it's, yeah, that's, can't remember the name of the street. Shannon?
I appreciated the work that the department did to course out this over the next five years, and I think the, the amount of funds that are being requested this year, and then you see the reduction next year, and then some additional funding sources coming into play. This both reflects to me that there is thoughtfulness in what's needed and what's gonna be a catalyst to other activities. And I think that initial fund on the tails of our Riverfront Island very public discussions, I think it's the right timing and the right purpose. And while we look at an overall capital improvement plan that has lots of really necessary things like security centers and servers and HVAC systems, if we're gonna be a community that recovers and is resilient after what we've faced in the last couple of years, I think that we need to make some tangible investments to things that have visual impact and create the other development investment in these areas. And I see the ones that are planned here attract events, support a couple of other housing developments. It just feels like a really important investment for our city to make after the commentary that we've had around the Riverfront Island Master Plan.
Michael?
What's being done to repair the park that's on the island?
On the, are you talking about the Veterans Park?
Yeah.
I know that they, you probably jumped in, I'll let you talk.
So that was part of the December seventeenth to the nineteenth storm. We did submit all our information to FEMA. We've gone through phase two for that FEMA, so it's a reimbursement. There's some discussion outside of, of a lot of different options for that. The FEMA money is to reinstate what was there. So we, we can't build back better, we can't move things, so that would reinstate the park.
And elevate the.
No, so at this point right now, barring any permitting, but we, we think we've vetted the permitting, we're staying above the normal high water line, we're not adding retaining walls. We would be armoring it as it was, doing some fabric, doing some infill and getting it back to the existing grade that was there.
I, I was curious, I'm looking at project descriptions, one, two, and three, is this simply engineering, or is there actually project completions involved in this request?
So I have to excuse me, Director Brenchek left December twenty first, and there was a quick handoff on this, so. Prior to that, I've been Deputy Director of Utilities for Public Works since two thousand and five, so this has not been typically in my wheelhouse. So trying to get up to speed, as I think Shannon Cox mentioned, you know, we've tried, Council Brenchek, Director Brenchek, tried to really parse out where we're at with design phase, where things would be expected in construction phase, broken up over those fifteen years.
It does say completion, if you go to the page twenty two, thirty two.
Part of that is the path that's gonna go in front of the Continental Mill where they're doing that, so it's gonna go across Beach Street, I think that's what.
Correct.
Yeah, so go to the next, if you go to the next page, it spells it out for you.
Yeah, it spells it out and gives you what, what's gonna be done when, and it gives the whole timeline.
We have a federal earmark, part of the Riverfront Island Master Plan has put a pavilion inside Samar Payne Park that's gonna be over by the main mill, you know, where they have the old loading dock that's still there.
Right, right.
It's the stage, Mr. O'Malley.
Well, which we use as the stage. Talking about putting a pavilion over there, that would be open for performances and for rentals and.
Yeah, I remember Ms. Brenchek talked about it.
Because the Continental Mill is doing the work in the Pickler Apartments, it's gonna run along that way, and then it goes over across over towards Potvin Park, across Cedar Street.
The, the reason I was curious about completables is because I'd rather invest in Samar Payne Park if, no, it had to be one or the other. That's, I think that's a different line item. Destin, maybe it's not, oh, canal ownership projects, that's sort of, that's in the area of the Samar Payne Park.
Part of, part of that is through the Riverfront Island Master Plan, they were talking about taking the fence off, making steps, kind of like going down there so you have access to the water, making that a friendly area and kind of building off that to draw people to that location across the street.
I see that activity as more of a priority.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, I think that's actually probably one of the cheaper and easier things to do with the access to the canal.
Well, it's five hundred thousand here, and the Riverfront is seven seventy, I share. I'm not sure, the other sixty is coming from Auburn, maybe?
No, I don't think it's gonna be to Auburn, but.
I just wanna point out for the board, page thirty-two that you're looking at, when you look at the far left column, those numbers, you know, four point zero zero, four point zero two and so forth, correlate, if you have your Riverfront Island Master Plan hard copy at home, you can look at, you know, the implementation part, has that numbering, so you can see the correlation there.
Oh, okay. Okay, great. All right.
I was just gonna quickly jump in and echo what Shannon said, that I think these are really important. You know, earlier on, we had folks flexing how long they've been in the community. I've been here probably the least amount of time of anyone on the board.
Flex it.
And I have to say, the reason I am here is because of our wonderful paths and recreational facilities along the river, and that is something that gets people to move here and something that people really enjoy. So, these are, these are very, very important, I think, for the community.
Okay, sounds, sounds like a plan, okay. Next one that I've got on, that I made comment on was the Red Shop Preservation. I understand that this is an historic building, but we listed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the twenty twenty-four LCIP, and now we're asking for four hundred thousand dollars more in twenty twenty-five. I don't support this. I, so the Public Works comments at a minimum, this initiative is to improve the aesthetics of a key building in the RIMP area. Continuing the renovation as outlined in the LCIP will add this as a possible venue or partnership for other investments to further develop this building and the RIMP. I understand that we're looking at some point that we could make money with this. Well, or at least.
Well, I can tell you that the initial two fifty was for the foundation work and just to kind of shore it up. If you look on page thirty-four, there's a drawing of what, you know, could, it could look like. The city has been in discussion about fixing that up and leasing it. People wanting to have space, having it as open, you know, if we start doing skating on the canals, have it, you know, winter time, having a space for a kitchen and/or having someone go in there to operate a business out of there, but, you know, the city would maintain it and lease it. Do we start having concerts on a more regular basis in Samar Payne Park? You know, use this, kind of like the green room, so if we have a pavilion, we have different acts come in or whatever, then they can use this space as well. We're in discussions with, you know, a lot of different uses for this. I don't know if you folks have ever been down there and seen this building, but it was pretty much falling apart in the past. But we took the last city council on a tour of it, and it's a very historic building, it's involved with the canals. It'd be a cool building to actually, you know, get into and have some space down there, and it's kind of adding to that location. We have the fitness park that's kind of right across over there. So we're trying to kind of follow the Riverfront Island Master Plan to get folks down into that, the part of the city.
Yeah.
But the first two fifty was just foundation, because the thing, and it had to do with, you know, the, you know, the technical one here, but the doors that keep the water from going back and forth, you know, that, the locks.
The gates for the canal system.
That stuff.
Right, that's the word you're looking for.
So that did get funded and done?
Yes, that has been done, I, I've been in the building. So that, now it's secure, but now we need to fix something. Because right now, it was used to store equipment and things like that for the canals and the mills back in the day.
So where is this exactly, is this?
Yeah, you're down by the Hampton Inn, that side of Samar Payne Park. It's the Red Shop, it's a red building.
Bridge the, the canal?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, at where, isn't it in the area of Atlas?
It's, yeah, you can see Atlas Supply.
Atlas Supply that, that's closing. But, yeah, it's in that, around that, that cross canal.
But this money, I mean, it kind of breaks down what they're looking to do. You see, it says about kitchen equipment and plumbing and things like that, and that's what this money is for.
Sure. Amy?
Yeah, just sort of to build on what Shannon was saying too about the Riverfront Island, I think this is another thing that adds to the momentum of getting that space in order.
Yeah.
If you've ever tried to have an event or even small gatherings down there, there's no running water, there's no toilets, and so the idea here would be to have sort of a stake in the ground where there's a facility that could be used in a lot of different ways. And I just wanna give a shout out to Shelley and everybody else who participated in the Riverfront Island Master Plan, because unlike Bates Mill number five, which is big and amorphous and hard to wrap your head around, this was very planful, and they sort of laid it out in bite-sized chunks so that we could, you know, have some momentum and keep it moving forward.
Shannon?
The income earning potential from this, which is really, when you look at the scope of things, we're looking at small dollars to get to a finished product that's actually leverageable towards income. But it's not just from the lease or the amount of hot coffee and hot cocoa we sell on any given whatever. It makes that whole park an economic development opportunity and a venue in a way that it is not. And I say that as somebody who spends considerable time and resources trying to make it into that venue a weekend a year, every year, and wishing desperately that there was a facility. And I know that there are other opportunities and other folks looking at this region to host there, and that this is kind of a, oh, they don't have a locked facility or a running water or restrooms, never mind. And they just look past us, and so it's small dollars to open a gateway of new opportunities that go beyond just the leasing contract or.
That's correct, and we, I mean, we've had people wanting to use the amphitheater for weddings. I mean, this would just add to that, so you have an actual venue to, to host type of events that Shannon Cox was talking about.
Sure.
There's still some logistics to figure this out as well. So, you know, we've got public money being spent on a venue, so there's legal aspects to this that's still gonna be researched on how that might flip into a, a private-public partnership or switch.
Yeah, Ms. Hunter mentioned that during the presentation, that that, you can't use public money for, if you're gonna make money on it. So that's, you know, this is always a little finessing that has to be done. So continuing in economic development, the Public Art Fund and the Destination Amenities, I didn't mention them because I think, I'll take a, a page from Shannon, these possibly should be operational funds and not, you know, funds that are gonna be bonded. I mean, we're talking a hundred thousand dollars for two, two items. I think they're both very necessary, you know, public art. But the Destination Amenities, if we're going to get people to be coming to the area, they need to be, have signage so that they know where to go, so we can tell them where to go nicely.
I believe this is in the city operating budget.
Okay, fantastic.
Both are the Destination Amenities.
Page thirty-five.
Thirty-five, got it.
Okay, and then the TIFs, well, they're, they're TIFs. I mean, we've gotta fund them because if we want the housing, we've gotta have, we've gotta have the TIFs. And as much as I hate TIFs. Police Department, I didn't put that in my comments either, but, you know, I mean, we gotta give them what they need to, to finish getting themselves into Mill number seven. And, and that's how I feel. Fire Department, again, these are replacement projects for both of the Main and Lisbon Street Fire, and these are just the planning costs or the design costs, the five hundred thousand each. I, I think, if I remember correctly reading, aren't they just the divi, the design and, or buying the land or that kind of thing?
Yeah, this is.
You know, five hundred and five thousand for Main Street, it's.
I think this is more for a funding shortfall just because the, the cost has increased to what we were expecting, so.
Everything's going up.
I mean, we are, the city is doing Main Street replacement, and then the next one is gonna be the Lisbon Street Fire Station.
Right. Yeah, Lisbon Street's going, is going to be down by the Ramada on Alfred.
That is the plan.
Yeah, that's the plan, fantastic. Okay, MIS, well, at least they're planning ahead. For the number of years, they never had any of them. So I think that, I mean, technology, as much as we don't wanna, you know, say it personally, technology, it changes so quickly, and we really need to keep our technology in the city updated or we're gonna run into some, some problems, we're going to be, we're gonna run into a problem where we're going to have one of these, what are they called? When somebody hacks in and, and freezes, locks up the system and.
Ransomware?
Ransomware, that's the word I'm looking for. You know, I mean, if we don't keep it up, we're, we're just asking for trouble.
I have a quick question on that.
Absolutely.
Mr. O'Malley, this might be a follow-up question, but they have been doing, our IT has been doing great at trying to plan ahead, replacing a server a year. I see the consistency of costs of this kind of blip on FY twenty-five, and I want to support them in continuing to plan ahead. And so, are there only twenty-five cameras, or are we just replacing twenty-five this year, and we need to start increasing the amount and scope for following years?
They have been replacing cameras, I think we have cameras past end of life, and then they, they're still, you'll use them, but then they, they can just die out. So they're trying to pre-plan for those things. Part of the issue too is the technology, I'm not the IT guy, but I may know enough to be dangerous where the 5G is now interfering with a lot of our cameras, where the cameras that we initially had out there.
I have no issue with this year, and the extra things. My concern is that there are no extra things being estimated into future years. And are all cameras reaching their end of life this year, and we've got another ten years of life?
No, I mean, they've been replaced.
So should we be expecting to see those final two items on the first part of page forty-three also added into fiscal year twenty-six and beyond? That's what I'm asking, is we've gotten into a stance of being more planful, and I don't want us to see each current fiscal year have a bump in the budget and the next four remain the same when we are expecting that there's gonna be fiber and cameras every year. So just to support good budgeting.
There shouldn't be, I mean, I'll double check, but there shouldn't be twenty-five every year. I mean, we don't have that many cameras, yeah, I mean, that are, that are out there, but I will, I will check.
Thanks.
Okay, so planning, I mean, we have to plan for comprehensive, planned implementation, so that's, and again, the amount is such. So that's, and again, the amount is such that it should be, I don't know if it is operational, but it probably is, so that's good. Public Works.
I mean, I can talk a little bit to that, so the con- plan implementation. We don't spend it every year, but sometimes we aggregate it for certain things. So like one thing we're talking about is doing the downtown plan that's required before we could do a downtown TIF district, for example. So that's something we've been talking about lately with the funding that we currently have. So, and some of it also gets utilized for implementation of the riverfront. So it, you know, staff.
It's fluid.
It's fluid, exactly.
Okay, okay, uh, let's see. So we'll go down and let me, what did I, okay. So Lincoln Street Parking Garage Deck Repairs. Well, I think we better repair the decks if we don't want it to collapse on us. So that's, that's always a good idea. The wash facility, I support this because we can make money from other entities such as purple buses using the facility. And their response is, we agree. Thank you.
Can I make a quick comment on that?
Absolutely.
Since you left the Transit Committee, Lucy, Western Main Transportation applied for and received federal funds to build their own wash facility for their purple trucks and their trucks. I went there for the opening of it. And then I immediately reached out to Western Main Transportation asking if the City of Lewiston could then bring their bigger trucks and vehicles to be washed, the undercarriages, what's what the big problems with their soul. And they said they couldn't because it's federal money and it's limited on what they can do and it has to be specific to their buses. So we would not, City Link would not send their buses over to Lewiston's if we did that. And we try, I tried to see if we could get ours over there and they said they can't allow that, so.
Okay.
I mean, may, perhaps, maybe Kevin could comment on this. Would other cities or towns want to use ours where we could make?
Yeah, I was going to say, does Auburn have their own?
But it wouldn't be the buses. The purple buses are, Western Main has their own station.
They have their own, okay.
Brian, has there been any more discussion about moving Public Works from Adams over to Riverside?
It's part of a five-year plan. So it, there is a plan for it. It's, the biggest one is the fuel island right now. We're losing our end of life on our fuel tanks. So we need to move our fueling island there. This is one component of that. If, if our fleet and our vehicles are up there, we have more space to actually build a proper wash facility and then not drive it back across town. That was another thing about having a wash bay in Auburn is we're going to then wash, you know, drive a truck we just washed right through the city we just added salt to. And so if you have a wash facility where you store your vehicles, then that adds to your life.
Okay, Shannon?
This is a long, like, Mr. Dupree's offering, but we supported in previous years capital improvement plan on two different occasions. The, the spending to do an assessment, an inventory of all Public Works facilities as well as locations and to offer some design and planning. I hear you speaking to a five-year plan. It would be helpful for us to know what that plan looks like. Because I think as we look at specifically the Public Works Building, the equipment wash facility, and then some of the other items, it's helpful to know where the investments are and how we're staggering them. And I know that you've mentioned a couple of times you got handed everything on December twenty-first. So it would just be helpful to garner the support you need to lay out a clear kind of sequence set of steps that relate to, you know, three point three million dollars of investment plus how we can be planful in supporting you.
Absolutely. We can share that information with you.
Great, great. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, Michael.
So on the wash facility, that's been in LCIP for ten years or more. I fully support this. If we had had that in place, maybe we could be washing the purple buses and getting revenue for them. But at one destination or another, Planning Board minor said no. The Finance Committee minor said no. In the end, the council, I think, did say no. And because it was one of those big-ticket items, it was easy to push down the road in order to meet the eighty percent goal. But this is an item in this category that I absolutely support. The deck repairs are probably necessary, but that Lincoln Street Parking Garage has always been a bane of my existence. Should never have been built in the first place. As far as the fire separation at the public, current Public Works Buildings, forty thousand dollars, do it. I mean, it costs us a lot more if we have a fire and something happens. Oh, and one more note on the wash facility. Because of the expense of our fire trucks, over a million dollars these days, the cleaner we can keep them, the longer they'll last.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, anybody else? Moving on. The Armory Interior and Exterior Projects, I mean, at this point, we're committed to the interior because we already spent a bunch of money and so we really have to spend the rest of the bunch of money to finish.
We should be completing, maybe you know more than that. I talked to Louis Turkott, our building and maintenance. They should be completing, I think, next month, that first phase of this project. Some of you may have seen that where they were digging up the road and, you know, putting in new pipes. I mean, so the sewer is not going to back up anymore. They're, they're working on the basement part of it. The locker rooms down there. I know there's an HVAC system that's got to be put on there. And then this is to fund the second phase of that.
Right, right. Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, I mean, we spent a lot of money on Phase One. We need to spend the money. And then the exterior, well, we need to protect the exterior so it doesn't fall apart on, after we've spent all the money on the interior. And the City Hall windows, I support this because the longer we wait, the more it will cost in materials and the incidental costs of heating and AC. It, you know, I mean, it's, it's dumb to keep kicking this thing down the road. It's not practical. That's my two cents.
Eighty-six-five, go get it.
Yeah, go for it. Okay, Public Works Highway. All right, I know I made the comment, oh, yeah. Jan's Boulevard Rehab postponed. And the Public Works response is this project has four hundred feet of old six-inch diameter water line that needs to be replaced. It was installed in nineteen sixty-one. This could be postponed one year, but phasing this work would be very disruptive to the neighborhood. The street has a PCI value, which I don't know what that is, of ten out of one hundred. Is ten high or is it start at hundred low and number one is?
Ten would, ten would be brand-new pavement.
Okay.
I mean, excuse me, hundred is brand-new pavement, ten, bottom ten percent of the.
It's gravel.
Yeah, almost.
Okay, well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, you know, because it's, okay. And then needs major drainage and grading updates, upgrades. This could be funded over two years and constructed in the second year. I don't object to that, I guess. Questions, comments, anyone else? Michael?
What you fully addressed was Jan's Boulevard, right? Or did you conclude on something else?
No, no, this is just Jan's Boulevard.
Okay, and it's a rated ten, yeah, four years ago. There was a huge hole in the ground, I guess, across the street, right at the beginning where you go into Jan's Boulevard from Webster Street. So I can imagine what that street looks like now. As you loop around, does it loop all the way around and come back onto Jan's? Because it seemed to be a lot of construction going on, incomplete construction, new homes, a dirt road on the backside, like you might even have a different name.
It is a different name street, yeah.
Would that be part of this as well?
Uh, no.
So this is just a straight line?
This is a straight twelve, twelve-hundred for Jan, I believe. Yep, twelve-thirty.
From Webster to, to a point where it starts to turn.
Denise is that back loop.
Denise.
Yep.
And that begins before it starts turning, Denise? Because Denise is real ugly back there, at least it was four years ago. Unless something's been done to it since. I find that is a hefty expense, but people out there pay taxes. They deserve to have a decent street, not a ten.
Okay, yes, Shannon?
So we're just, and your page sixty-two does a really great job linking things together. But we, in this section of the capital improvement plan, we always kind of wander into this space where making a cut in a highway piece means that we are not repairing the highway, though we are repairing the water main. Or we say, oh, great case you just made, let's do Jan's Boulevard. But then we flip a couple of pages and then we say, let's not invest in replacing the water piping of which you pave and then cut into the water piping to replace that two years from now. And so just in general, and this is a really hard timing question for you and so Mr. O'Malley, you might be on the pin for this. Can we just operate with a level of confidence that you have thoughtfully matched up water, sewer, drainage, and highway pavement investments to align for a full, comprehensive approach?
Yes.
Which historically was not the case until a few years ago.
So we, we have an asset management software. It's called Beehive and that is what first started with utilities for, for planning. But now our PCI scores are in there, what are, what are latest, so we're working to fully stand that up. So the idea is you can look at these, what we're calling a project polygon. So you can look in an area, see what's wrong with it. If the water soars, storm, that's good. What type of, you know, is DOT coming in? What's the schedule? To really have a high-level discussion on where things begin, where they end, the timing, sequencing. So we can line the soars, replace the water lines that need to be replaced, and then pave a street and not come back for twenty-five years.
Good.
So that, that's what we're doing.
So, and, and you're doing the separation, CSO separation as well while we're there?
Correct, that's coordinated and that was well.
And that's fantastic, fantastic.
And that was a manual effort before?
Oh, yeah.
You know, kudos to all the engineers that were trying to coordinate that. So now, now we have one system, we're all looking at the same thing.
And, and that, that's fantastic that we finally got the software that can do this and make it a lot easier for you guys instead of having, you know, to be looking at six different maps and trying to figure everything out. Okay, fantastic. Anybody else? Yes, Amy?
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify. So the first time Jan's Boulevard shows up is here, Public Works Highway?
Yep.
And then it shows up again under Stormwater Division and again underwater division?
Correct.
That's what we're saying is it's really one big project for the same stretch of road?
Right.
We, we're actually sort of maximize pavement money and, you know, to not all be on the tax side if it's not a MDOT or other federal funds. Where, when we replace the water line, that water line's helping pay for that trench pavement as well. Okay, so you probably get ten feet of pavement out of that. So if you're adding storm drain, you're replacing the storm drain, there's another six to ten feet of trench width there. So what's getting paid for on, on a twenty-foot width to the, the general fund for paving is much less when you start piggybacking these utilities. So that's why it's being coordinated in multiple lists.
And why we shouldn't just go cut the bottom piece and just pave over it and say yes in this part?
Yeah, right.
Just getting ahead of the conversation that's historical.
If we approve one, we need to approve all three basically.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That's where I'm going with that.
Or we're just shooting ourselves in the foot, which we have a history of. So this is really great progress.
And, and that's what we've been trying to get them to do for, for years and now they've got the software to do it. So we need to listen to them when they make the suggestion in various areas. Michael?
I just have one question. The mention of Jan showing up in Stormwater and Water, why doesn't it show up in sewer?
The sewer is not a problem.
Not a problem?
Correct.
And won't be for a good ten, fifteen, twenty?
We've been doing structural lining and full assessments for the last ten years. So we're making sure that we're compliant with EPA and trying to stay ahead of, we don't cause cave-ins and failure.
Just worried about putting down a pavement and then having to dig it up two years later?
Absolutely.
Has that wetland area to the left of Jan's Boulevard been affecting the road at all?
I'm not aware. Don't have to check into it. That would be part of, you know, we can't drain a wetland, but at the same time, if it's saturated soils, we're looking to put storm drain in, so.
Well, that's what I'm thinking because with all this water that we've been having, I know that little pond on the right-hand side, right up to the brim, and everything is carried over across Webster. So I would assume that that wetland area there is starting to flood pretty well, which is going to be backing up from Jan.
Definitely take it into consideration.
And I believe that that culvert that I mentioned from four years ago might have been filtering water from, if you're driving into Jan, from the right side to the left side where the bog.
Right, okay.
So there may be flowage across the road.
Okay, Bradbury Road Rehab postponed. And the LPW response, fiscal year twenty-five is for the design of reconstruction. Fiscal year twenty-six is for the reconstruction of the road. This road is narrow, steep, and difficult to maintain during winter operations. Graders, plow trucks, and sanders have been stuck and damaged due to the shape and condition of this road. We also receive many complaints and safety concerns from the public. Reconstruction will allow safer winter operations for Public Works staff and for the residents of the street. And I, I have been on that street, but it's like twenty years ago and it was bad then. And so, I mean, I realize I just postponed, I'm, I'm just rattling people's cages over here, okay?
Small dollars for a design investment this year?
Correct.
Yeah.
And this could be phased.
Right. And, and, you know, I mean, if, if it can be phased, then that, that would be fantastic.
This afternoon, I talked with our pavement coordinator. This is the last street in the city with gravel. So his goal is try to be done gravel streets.
Right.
That could be phased and not, not my priority.
Yep, okay.
Good question. Does anyone know how many folks live out there? I just looked it up because I wasn't familiar with it. And it's like, oh, that, that's quite the road. That's a, looks like an adventure to drive. How many residences does it serve?
I don't know the actual residence number. I believe there's like five homes.
Yeah.
It's right around five, six homes.
Lot of road for five homes.
Yeah.
It is a city street and we do plow it and maintain it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
You know, ice storm in ninety-eight through recent washouts or whatever, those are the city crews trying to maintain that road, keep, keep it open for emergency services as well as residents.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, complete streets implementation. We went from a standing request for seventy-five thousand dollars each year in twenty-twenty-three to almost five hundred thousand for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six. Is this being coordinated with Main DOT? Is that why the huge increases? I'm just being nosy and the response was, yes, this is being coordinated with MDOT and the city funds are our match, twenty percent of the one point nine million, eighty percent grants in state and federal money for these projects. The increase is due to the number of projects and the schedule moving forward with construction. Works for me. Shannon?
Mr. O'Malley, you're going to hear a theme of my comments tonight. And so I both apologize and appreciate you greatly. So I'm excited to see this upfront investment and a conversation that we've had around this planning board, not just in times when there's been injuries to pedestrians in our community and surveys and research has been done though then as well, but even just as recently as reviewing commercial corridor zoning changes to increase commerce in our city. It would be helpful, and I know that there are some plans, but again, it'd be helpful in a full-circle loop for this planning board to understand kind of the stages of investments that we're planning to make on pedestrian pathways and streetways, particularly in some of the, because the spots named in this are the right spots and there are spots that have come up in our conversations around development in a couple of commercial areas and neighborhoods abutting those commercial areas. It would be helpful for us, not just at the time of the capital improvement plan, but to have the general knowledge of what designs or plans are, are there and are being phased as we review development applications, whether it's three hundred new units of housing and what will that do to pedestrian access. Those are the kind of conversations that we regularly have there and it makes us an advocate for your funding as well as educated for our general public and applicants who are looking to invest in our city. So we'd love to see that.
Definitely work on putting a presentation together. Right now, we have multiple studies focused in Lewiston. There's the Village Initiative Planning, which is with MDOT. That's underway now. The ATRC has a corridor plan on Lisbon Street for multi-use, you know, pet, walk, bike, parking, all of that. As long as, as well as the Safe Streets for All Initiative, which is also underway, which is a bigger picture intermodal with Auburn. So those are coming and those all tie into the River Island Master Plan as long as there are another initiatives, Heads Up and all of that. And all actually, really, the outcome of the studies help program in federal money to be able to implement things.
Yeah, it'd just be helpful and Shelley, maybe this is something you can kind of track along, but oftentimes we get these requests, we support design plans, we don't get a full-circle loop. And this has kind of been us asking to be working in better partnership with city staff and with the city council as we support. with city staff and with the city council as we support investments into our city. And so, yeah, I, I don't want you to hear my request is wait until you have the final plans or that we want all the answers. I think it'd be helpful, even if it's a five-minute update on an occasional planning board, um, to hear what studies are underway, what you're learning from them, or what problem areas are, are surfacing or being focused, because it often comes full circle in our development reviews.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, sidewalk, uh, these, I did not make comments on the next ones. Sidewalk Maintenance and Rehabilitation, Street Maintenance Program, and the solid, uh, those I, uh, you know, I mean, we gotta keep them up, and as much as I, some streets, I think, you know, you wonder why that street has, you know, why does Baird not have, uh, is it Baird? Baird, yeah, Baird that goes up by Holy Cross Church? I mean, that road is ridiculous. It's, it's been, um, you know, dug up, and, and so it's like walk, like a washboard trying to go up that street. Anyway, it, you know, you look at it, where is it in the, in the chart of account, you know, the chart, and, and you say, why is it taking so long, and that kind of thing? So, um, that's my, those are my comments. Michael?
On this note, I know this is sidewalk maintenance and rehabilitation, but, uh, part of maintenance is snow plowing. Really been impressed with the sidewalk plowed as early and often during a snowstorm on Pleasant Street. And it had been advocating for that for years, and it's been happening the last couple of years. I assume that it's happening throughout the city, as long as we maintain our, uh, plowing devices. Uh, those can be expensive, too.
Absolutely.
Uh, have to be replaced from time to time. When Lucy was mentioning Baird Street, which is in my neighborhood, I'm not picturing it very well, but I'm remembering, uh...
2025.
I'm remembering some, uh, road reconstruction, not sure which level of reconstruction, on Acadia and Weber, just this past fall. Are you familiar with that?
Weber, Weber was, was done, yeah, they did, they did it all summer.
Yeah.
And that was between, I think, Lisbon and Pleasant.
Yeah, between Lisbon and Pleasant, and, because I've been complaining about Acadia for a long time. Now you need to get to my street, right, right behind Shaw's. But, uh, and, and that is, at least last year, it was in the LCIP somewhere, not sure which year. Hopefully it didn't get pushed. But the sidewalks, were those just slapped down? I, I haven't taken a good look, but when I drove by, it looks like, no, they were just put in half-hazardly.
I'll have to check it out and get back to you.
On, yeah, Acadia and Weber. I, I don't know if they put granite in there, or if they just, uh, put asphalt down to the pavement, but, uh...
We've been, we've been trying to do, uh, the cast-in-place concrete where granite's not called for, uh, bituminous curb just does not hold up, doesn't meet ADA, so...
Because the construction in there looked like it wasn't gonna hold up, that's why I'm...
Right. I'll have to check out, the, the project did run long in the year, and they might have been just wrapping up and might have a spring follow-up to do.
Yeah, it did seem to take a bit long.
Yep.
And I was just curious, with the chart of, uh, the five years and the cost estimations, those all based on current costs, uh, no inflation incorporated in that?
Uh, we try to forecast as best we could. I think, you know, one or two years, that was reasonable. Past that, we, we try to adjust, so...
Because it looked like it was all the same, that's why.
We, we use current, we, we, we're kind of optimists, I think.
So, just a quick question. The sidewalk replacement, that's just replacing what's already existing? Uh, there's no expansion or contraction of the network?
Uh, it depends on where the requests are and what's going on, um, to support development in the downtown. We've done some, redone some sidewalks beyond what the developer's done, um, some of the schools, uh, that is, that has factored in the past. So it really depends on what's going on. Um, we're having a tough time, as Mr. Markcott said, keeping up with existing sidewalks and winter operations, so to expand those really need to be justified. I think there's, there's one on, um, Montello Street.
Yep.
That's underfunded right now. There's ledge, some other issues, so I, you know, we try to bring things forward and, and do what we can.
I think, I think being specific, just to, you know, make it clear, I'm not looking for expansion of network. I'm curious about, um, how we, yeah, how we decide where sidewalks are, and in some ways, contraction of network, um, to make maintenance easier in the long run, so, you know, streets where sidewalks aren't necessary or pedestrian facilities can be built into the roadway, um, looking at that. And, and, and rather than just sort of like, oh, there's already sidewalk there, let's replace it, just, you know, everything's on a five-year schedule or something like that, I was curious if we thought about it beyond that.
That, that definitely weighs in. It weighs in on where the neighborhood is, you know, is it a main thoroughfare, is it a small subdivision with very low traffic? So all that weighs in, along with some of our plans, some of our initiatives.
Gotcha. Okay, so you do have like a, a plan that you run through?
Absolutely.
Okay. Is that something that we can get access to?
I can send you what the engineer's criteria and what they're looking at.
Okay, that'd be sweet. Thank you.
Sure.
It's almost like we're a planning board, asking for all these plans.
I know.
I bet that's not how it goes at finance.
Yep. So the next one is the solid waste facility, uh, Left Turn Lane. Um, I remember Ms. Bre, Branchik talking about, about it, uh, the last time she was, or one of the times she was with us, um, and it's for safety concerns, uh, as much as anything else, correct? That, uh, on Lincoln Street right now, if somebody wants to turn left and there's a lot of traffic coming the other way, then the traffic backs up, or they go on into the gutter to go around, because that's what they'll do. Uh, so it's just a safety, a safety thing. Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments on that one? Okay.
Um, yeah, absolutely. Feels like a nice-to-have, not a must-have, if we're in a tight budgeting season, you could do it in another year or two.
Right, okay. Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, Michael?
I thought it was gonna be the next item, but I think it's still under Public Works Highway, Street Maintenance Program. I was just looking at, uh, where my street falls in, it looks like 2027. I'll have to check last year to see if it was 2026.
Uh-huh, uh-huh, yeah.
And I'm noticing these PCI numbers, uh, on some of these streets, eight, six, 26, minus 22, and I guess I rate. Strip and pave means, uh, the most that you can do, it's more than shim and overlay or...
Mill and fill.
Mill and fill, I'd assume?
It, it's pretty much a mill and fill. Yeah.
A strip and pave, you're gonna strip the whole thing and, right from the, uh, surface. That's great, that's awesome. Because I, I was looking at six versus 22. And I was curious, because I know a couple of these streets, maybe it was just one, that got paved, uh, about four years ago, um, off of Webster. Reservoir, Constance, I can never remember them in the right order.
Okay.
You're gonna lift the hill?
Yeah, so, so if you take a right at the corner of Weber and Webster, and head out of town, the first one is Constance?
Oh, I don't know.
Here, hold on.
I, I, I'm just, I wanna make sure that this is not the same run, one that was fixed four years ago.
Well, I'm sure it...
Because Reservoir kind of rang a bell to me.
Yeah, we went, uh...
So, you're going uphill or going east on Webster? So it's Clearwater, Reservoir, Constance, Lorraine?
Okay, so it must've been Constance and Lorraine that got done, and not Reservoir. And the first one was what?
Clearwater.
Well, it's just, at first, I really appreciate, as you lay out the street maintenance program, that you're naming like where water rehab has an impact, and that's in bold, because that goes to where, like, don't cut in one spot, then the other conversation from earlier. Um, first, what's MPI, all the way to the right top, above road rehab water rehab?
Let me first correct. So a mill and fill is actually grinding. The strip and pave, I will have to get back to you, because the shim overlay is just that, it's reshaping the road with a shim. So the strip and pave, I'll get back to you on what that is.
I think that's taking up all of the pavement. It, it's pretty bad pavement.
It may be, it's probably thin, and we're just taking the top, aggr, aggr, you know, it...
Mill and fill is when you like chew it up and put it back down nice and new.
Correct, we put a grinding, we put a grinder on it.
I think the strip is like, can't use that again, we've done that a couple times.
I think we're just pulling pav, thin pavement.
Good, because you got one part hole out there that didn't spring, I'm gonna be asking for a nice little fill.
So an M, my understanding, and I may be erroneous here, but MPI is actually with state funds, so it's, it's in the, uh...
Has to do with Main Dot?
Do you remember what it is? It's, uh...
MPI?
MPI.
I'm sorry, I don't...
I think, I think it's in the, uh, it's kind of like the Urban Compact, so there's some state participation there.
Oh, okay.
Municipal, uh, municipal planning initiative, I think is what it is. So it's coordinated with the state.
Not great.
Yeah.
I mean, it makes sense in the way you've ordered things otherwise.
Yep.
So then, when you look at the PCIs and you start to see things, and this goes to Alex's point, so there's a PCI slated for 2025 of 71, which is Laura Street from Roseland to Bailey? And I have to say, like, why? If we have streets that are like a four, and a 12, and a 22, you know, why is 2026's eight on Lexington Street not getting pulled into 2026? And 2026's PCI of 71 feels important for this year? And I'm not gonna like bullet point or go through all of those with you, but like, it'd be nice to see that, you know, in addition to any MPI or water rehab, you know, overlapping advantages, where prioritizing, um, PCIs with, you know, a 40 or less in this year, and expecting degradation of the next year's, and that their grade will drop and they'll come up, but that kind of criteria uniformly applied as a standard would be helpful.
So I think, you know, Dale Doughty came from DOT, he was our director before Mary Ann Branchik, uh, and, and talked about that. So there's times when they can do a quick, uh, shim and overlay, and, and that really extends, so it's, it's minimal money for it.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so I can get what our general, uh, protocols are for determining what we're gonna do and what PCI.
Because then a 71 would expect to see a shim and overlay, and a shim and overlay price to connect to it.
Yeah, so there's, there's sound of some boundaries there, where, you know, we're not, you know, we, we do, uh, what's called crack sealing, so that's trying to maintain that upper layer before we start doing anything. Uh, we don't want water getting into...
It's just that 71 has a strip and pave?
Right.
So it's not like, like it's, before it gets too bad, let's just put a little money and make it really last another 10 years. It doesn't sound like that's the strategy that's being applied. So like, where's that? I'm not trying to nitpick, nor do I want to look at each of them, but it'd be nice if we looked down and there was some consistency in the numbers and the action being taken next to it that, you know, showed that thinking.
May, may I ask a question related to Shannon's?
Absolutely.
Is, is some of this also, though, based on geography? Like you hauling all the equipment out there?
Right.
And you're not gonna haul it out for a small street?
We, we definitely try to make sure that we're...
In the neighborhood?
We're clumping work together and minimize MOB and DMOB for the contractor and get a good price.
I think, so hence it not being a perfect PCI run.
And streets...
You wanna take a look at it? Laura Street's not even a house long.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're just going around the corner.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Be out there and do it.
It's just it's $5 million, and it's $5 million roughly every year for the foreseeable future.
Yeah.
And history, so...
Yep.
It's nice to hear we're making improvements and being planful about it.
Right. Okay, MDOT projects, uh, I mean, our part, because these are state projects, it's, it's Main Street, East Avenue, uh, they're, our, our portion is, is 10%. So we really need to, you know, put in our, our 10%. And now we come to vehicle, vehicle replacement. So page 78. Public Works Equipment Replacement. No on the following. Electric pill service truck, $80,000. Hydro cedar, $58,000. Remote steep terrain mower, $40,000. And a roll-off truck, $255,000. And, and I was asked, why did I pick those not to fund that, that equipment? And honestly, I, because I don't know what they are, some of them, and, and, and they're expensive, and so I, I just picked.
You've got a cut.
You got a cut, so, you know, I just...
You gotta be frugal, so I'm trying to understand.
Well, yeah, and, and some of it, I didn't know what it was, so...
Yep.
So, uh, Mr. Gangi did explain, so the electrical service truck is on, is for the on-call city street light traffic signal electrician to respond to emergencies after hours. Instead of coming to the Public Works Yard and driving the electrical bucket truck to the traffic signal cabinet that needs emergency service, this vehicle will allow direct response to restore signalized intersections and other electrical emergency calls. So this is basically like a pickup truck with, 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 uh, or, or a van-ish kind of truck that's got parts and tools and...
Correct.
Stuff like that.
Correct.
Okay.
And a bucket?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't have a bucket.
I am not sure, I don't, I can't say yes or no. I can kind of look into it.
Right, because it says, instead of coming to get the bucket.
So most of our calls, typically the on-call person has a, a regular vehicle, or they're taking, come into the yard, and all their tools are in that big 4O, that big bucket truck.
Right.
We don't need to go aerial, we need to get into the, the traffic cabinet, because something has happened.
Right.
This truck would allow them to go to that and not bring the big 4O out.
Right.
Yep.
In, in that case, it's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
See, I...
Uh, and related to that is that, uh, we are getting, uh, state money, state, the state has just come out, DOT said, the state owns all of our signals, they're responsible for the capital replacement of it. However, we're in a maintenance agreement with them to be able to get some money to help put towards our signalized intersections. That's key, because as we talk about, uh, mode, you know, different modes, walking, biking, through the downtown, uh, one of our biggest failures are the ped buttons. Ped buttons will put an intersection at a recall. That'll screw up all the traffic, all the timing, so our street light and electrical crews are also our traffic people. So they've been the ones that have been trained up on the software, on the hardware, on the wiring, so whether, you know, we've got cameras up on, on the mast arm, so depending on what's going on, uh, getting there and getting the intersection back up in normal mode is the desire of this vehicle.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, could we, as a question, get, uh, specifics on what the vehicle is?
Sure.
Like if it's a pickup truck over a work body, or a van, or, you know, whatever, just, just for the record?
Sure.
Because everything else has, has a little more detail.
Sure, okay. So the next was the hydro cedar will allow Public Works to, crew to reestablish lawn areas after construction and winter plowing in a more efficient way, allowing time to work on other maintenance items. Without more stuff, we need to use better technology and equipment. The remote, yeah, go ahead, does somebody have any comments? No. The remote steep terrain mower is replacing an existing old mower that cannot mow areas like, uh, Russell Street, on and off ramps, steep slopes along cemeteries, landfills, storm ponds, playgrounds, schools, we have been using demonstration equipment to evaluate this work and the alternative is to not mow these areas or manual weed whacking. And then the last one was, we have three roll-off, uh, truck prior to contracting out, uh, ash hauling. After contracting out ash hauling, we were able to go to two roll-off trucks. With annual increases in ash hauling costs, we are looking to end contracting of the ash hauling to save the city money and we will need this third roll-off truck to accomplish this. So, what's a roll-off truck? I mean, they pick up this dumpster thing and, and, and this humongous thing and then they take it to the dump and.
Correct. So we, we have trash pickup by Casella, they bring trash and recycling, the trash goes to, uh, Maine Energy where they burn it, and we have an agreement to haul that ash back to the Lewiston solid waste landfill and dispose of that ash in our landfill. So, we have been contracting out that work, but we still have a responsibility to provide that truck, we've had some issues with use and abuse of that truck and responsible repairs. We have a truck that's getting older, so in talking with Megan Bates and John Kaczynski, who are, manage that, those accounts, they're looking at the fees that we're paying versus, and looking at a savings by starting to haul our own ash again.
Okay, alright, Shana?
Uh, on page seven, you have the municipal garage vehicle and equipment replacement listed with the city share at one million two hundred forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars, and that's not what it says on page seventy-seven and seventy-eight, and so you might have already made some cuts from back to the front page totaling almost a million dollars. No, a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, a hundred thousand. So, uh, do you wanna check and see what you've already cut? Thanks for the savings. Just gonna slot that hundred thousand dollars in the easy to cut category. Hmm. Alright.
I'm good, thanks.
Yes, absolutely.
So, um, just thinking of what I think about during my day job and thinking about some of these items, particularly the electrical service truck, the hydro cedar, in light of the extreme weather that seems to be more and more our norm, are you factoring, obviously not being able to foretell the future, but I could appreciate these as you likely are trying to forecast, no pun intended, forecast the future, what the needs might be.
Uh, really, you know, wet weather conditions, you know, we, mowing more often has been the issue the last couple of years, so, uh, when we'd hire summer students to get mowing done, we're not getting summer students, uh, temporary help has been down, so more of our regular staff is doing this, while the request for mowing, whether it's vacant lots, uh, other areas that aren't normal, part of our norm, we have some kind of flail mowers, bush hog mower type mowers for easements and those type, so some of it's seasonal or monthly, so really trying to get to these areas where, you know, we have ticks, even in the downtown, I mean, I've got guys that went to go, uh, check a hydrant, they really didn't get off the road and, and they got ticks, so these are some of the issues that factor in.
Sure.
Yep.
I'd just say that in support.
Appreciate it.
Jim?
Can the hydro seed send out seeds that aren't grass? Like, could we, could we look at seeding things that require less maintenance, have less growth rates?
Absolutely, currently what the hydro cedar for is really when we've done lawn damage in the spring, we restore grass areas. Um, it's, you know, we put notices, any type of, uh, replacement work or, or repair work, whether it's a customer's, you know, water service, hydrant work, anything like that, highway, it's tough to get the watering depending on the time of year, so that hydro seeding, really reestablishing it fairly quickly. I think we do use a conservation mix, you know, we're not trying to make everything a nice front lawn if we don't have to.
I think I might be picking up where you're going with this, Shana.
Just, I mean, we buy the mower and we pay the people to mow, and then we buy and pay for the water to water seed the thing, and like, what if we just didn't plant grass and we planted something that was like a little more drought consistent and reached a max height of four inches and you never had to mow it at all? Maybe those are the seeds we buy.
So, I mean, you know, realistically, uh, where it's a big concern is kind of like medians and islands, and that's a big discussion, right? Windows are put in, what type of aesthetic do you put on it? You know, we've done some pavement and stamping and painting, and it comes to when that starts to look ugly, what do you do? Um, so we, you know, we try to.
There's other vegetation.
We try to weigh that in, you know, rain gardens and those type of things, depending on the type of winter we had, uh, usually need some care as well, so you, we found that unless you're gonna pave it, we're gonna be back there trying to make it look nice.
So, quick question, so is this, the steep terrain mower replacing conventional mower and it will be able to be used for flat terrain, steep terrain, everything, so?
That's my understanding.
It's more looking at getting a multi-purpose mower rather than just a conventional mower?
Correct, that's my understanding.
And what, I think it's a fine investment, what's the cost difference between the two?
I can look into that and get that back to you.
That would be great.
Okay, Michael?
Just to note that this seems to be everyone's favorite place to, to pick from, whether it's planning board, finance committee, council, finance department, probably, which probably is who already found the ninety-eight thousand dollars from one page to the other. The sidewalk tractor, like, sorry, the last line refers to snow plowing. Are you go, going with one particular vendor these days for those units?
I know Phil has really tried to, to standardize the equipment, whether it's brand or whether it's actual model type, we do try to standardize it. I'm not sure where this is planned for, because sometimes it's planned for a certain route, so we do have some routes that are narrow. Uh, we do have the downtown, we use the tool CAT for, has wider implements, can do a better job, so it may be site-specific.
Which one's the Canadian company that? All I can think of is Bombardier, but it, it may be a different.
That, that was one of them.
That was one of them.
Yep.
The way you said it.
Okay, guys, let's, let's move on, it's, uh.
Spanky, getting spanky.
It's getting, yeah, we're getting crazy. Okay, so Public Works Open Spaces, and I, uh, let's see, Sunnyside Riverside Trail Extension, postponed if not awarded CDBG funds, and the response is FY twenty-five is for design and securing easements for future work.
Yep.
And, and I know that a number of people on the board are very hot on, uh, you know, trails and stuff, so, uh, you know.
And those rascals that keep moving here and paying taxes are too, it's wild!
I mean, I, you know, just because I don't.
God, people who want some.
Yeah, just because I don't walk, I mean, you know, I don't walk, so they shouldn't have the trail, no. I'm kidding, guys, I think they, trails are great. Uh, but I still think, you know, the CDBG, it said that it's, 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 uh, CDBG funds are. Okay, next is the public restaurants.
I will just add, since we have your notes, I don't know that, if you wanna read it, you can, but the, the language in the book and the way we heard about it did sound like we needed seven people, and, and then when you look at eighty-five thousand dollars, those seven people are getting paid really poorly, um, unless it's just one position, so I, I did the math, but, um, I will name that, that might come up for others as it's written in the book. Yeah. Just your phrasing of it.
Yeah, well, that was, that was part of, of how I came out, and then his expla, his explanation is it requires one person, but eighty-five grand for one person to maintain, I mean, I, I, it's not exactly my kind of work either, but.
That's gonna be salary and benefits.
And benefits.
And this is actually gonna.
Overtime.
Overtime, and this is actually gonna be, um, a position that's created based on the hazardous.
Hazardous waste.
Waste of it, of, of the.
Yeah.
Cleaning of the.
Yeah.
Thanks for painting that picture, Mr. Owen.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I can understand. Yes, yes.
The question that we were talking about right before the meeting is, if that's comparable to other positions with similar hazards?
Yeah, it is, but it's with a little step above and then you throw in the benefits.
Yeah, because of the hazardous waste and stuff, sure.
Job responsibilities, I guess.
Yeah, I think it's fantastic that we're gonna finally put some bathrooms down, downtown.
Yeah, I don't know if you folks saw that lube they talked about a couple of years ago.
Few years ago, oh, yeah.
Two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, that was a bit.
Indestructible steel thing, and this is, um, something that's modeled down in, in Portland, and we actually had a field trip, our former director and I think a couple of other folks from Public Works went down to see the setup and how they do it, and these are things that you can paint and put murals on or pictures on or whatever.
Are they plumbed?
No, they're not, um, the best way I can describe it is, um, the drawer in your refrigerator for your, um, the crisper, that gets pulled out and that is what is, collects the waste, and then that's emptied out. Um, so that way you can move in at different locations, so it doesn't have to be.
So fancy porta potty, but we like it a lot better than the traditional ones.
Right, it's gonna be more, and, and, Portland has had great, um, success with it, and, you know, we've had issues when we put porta potties in the parking garages, uh, and they've, they've been destroyed and people wouldn't rent them to us anymore, so this is a, um, an alternative to that. And you may not even know that it's a, it's a restroom unless you actually look at the markings on it. So we've got a few locations that we feel would, they would be beneficial to the city to put these.
How portable are they?
Fairly portable is my understanding, I mean, you can, you could.
With those big roll-off trucks we just talked about?
They won't get carried off, but, I mean, if we wanna disassemble them, move it to another location.
I'm just saying, so like, it fits Dempsey Weekend.
Right.
Could you, could you deploy, if you look at these as assets that are not plumbed and not fixed into any location, could you deploy them for the two or three times a year that we literally have tens of thousands of people here that support the visitor's experience with our existing public restroom infrastructure?
I believe these would be moved with a loader, with big forks and a big loader.
But I, I think that some of the locations as well are down by some art paint, yeah, some of our parking garages that, would be conducive to encouraging people to use that instead of using.
Yep.
Other locations.
Okay.
I'm curious, uh, what was the location in Portland?
I don't know off the top of my head, um, I know that Mary Ann Brenchik and her staff had gone, I did not go on the porta potty field trip.
Did you take fixtures on your field trip?
I didn't go. They, they.
I was the utility guy.
They did go on it.
Well, the one that I was familiar with was down in Boston, it may be a higher grade unit than the one in Portland. I was just curious, I'd take a, when I'm in Portland, I'd take a look and see if it matched up.
I can actually try to get that information for you folks if you'd like that.
Please.
Because I'd, I'd really love to see the one that was down in Boston, but that may be, what, the two hundred and ninety-five thousand that you're talking about?
Yeah, that one was stainless, that was.
That was the lube, it was, yeah.
Yeah, that's good, it's, it, that one was, was much, I mean, you could have had one like, like when we were, when I was in Paris last time, you, you go in there and it, it's, when you leave, it sanitizes the whole thing. I mean, it sprays the inside with like a disinfectant, whatever, and, and it's, so it's locked, it locks automatically, does that, and then it opens up and lets you in, and, and the inside is kind of wet. It's an odd.
These would not have.
Disinfectant does not clean the toilet seat.
These would not have that feature.
Oh, yeah, that, it was, it was weird, it was a very weird bathroom, anyways, okay. So, next one is the Sunnyside Park renovations, uh, again, it's, uh, they're scheduled for CDBG funds and hopefully, uh, it's, uh, the response is LPW will be completing a CDBG application for funding, the amount is for planning only for twenty twenty-five, and. Yeah, okay.
So is it, sorry, is it really like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to complete one plan that talks about the park and the trail? Or are we doing that with two plans and it's going to bid to two different people and they're not working together?
Um, gonna have to get back to you on that, and I just know that we're trying to get, you know.
Would you please? Because I would be much more excited about saying, yes, here's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for planning for a comprehensive.
I think it depends.
Approach to the park?
I think it depends on the park and which one we're talking about.
Sunnyside.
They're both sunny.
I understand, but there's like five parks and pocket parks and, so I will have to get back to you.
In that area. Okay, yeah, that would be great.
Shana makes a good point, because when these contracts come in, there's usually a huge mobilization, which means nothing. Like, it's whoever can sharpen their pencil better to get the contract, so you don't really wanna overpay by having them separate.
Okay, Public Works, solid waste, um, you know, I mean, and I'm not thrilled about a million six for, uh, trash cans, but I guess that we gotta go that route because it's, they're not gonna have the guys in the back of the, the trucks anymore, so.
Correct, they won't be offering that service anymore, and that's gonna be quite a, a process.
Yeah.
Educating folks on that, and this is the beginning process.
Trying to get them to put them on the right side of the street and the right way and all that, yeah, that should, that should be fun.
Yeah, Alex?
Have we talked with, because I know Pine Tree Waste has implemented this in other communities, have we talked to them about sort of how they were able to transition in and maybe, you know, good best practices for budgeting and things, I mean, I'm assuming our contractor is gonna tell us.
We've met with Casella and they've, they've done this in other communities, Auburn has ruled some of this out already, they have an app uh, to be able to get messaging, um, if you, your street is delayed, like, happened, it's a couple of recent storms, they'll tell you when your pickup is. So, we have started that discussion with them.
Right, because like holidays, you know, my trash normally is Friday, so with, with any kind of a holiday, my trash day gets bumped to Saturday.
Well, it's usually just for Christmas and New Year's when that falls during the middle of the week, and your day will be delayed one.
One day, right, but.
We do put that on the city website, I know that.
Yeah, I know you did, I saw it.
Folks had put that out.
But, but people don't look at the city website, they put their trash out on Friday, anyways, Amy?
So I'm just wondering, um, in the downtown, were there a lot of multifamily properties? How many tra, is it one trash bin per unit?
That is still up for discussion, I know that, um, Director Brenchik at the time talked to the city council about different size cans, you know, ninety or thirty, you know, so that's still part of the process, that that isn't been finalized. I mean, you have some families with, you know, seven, eight kids in it, uh, a lot different than someone who doesn't have any kids at home, so I think that's still part of the discussion process, Amy, I don't think that's been determined yet.
Okay, and how many recycling bins?
I'm gonna have to say, same as above.
But, but they, there are recycling bins.
Right, there were, right, there would be trash and recycling, and, um, you know, like I said, this was initial conversations, more of a, just to kind of give a heads up of, um, what would the city offer, could you purchase more, but then, you know, would landlords have to do, so there's a whole process in terms of what's gonna happen, this is just the starting figures.
Lot of discussion, a lot of public input and.
Yeah.
policy, things to be figured out.
Jim?
Yeah, it's a couple of things. So, I don't know what sense you'd like to make of it, um, but at the top of page eighty-six, it does lay out residential units to sixty-four gallons, commercial units to ninety-six gallons, these numbers are based on some of that math. I'd be, I'd be curious about a couple of things, and this goes back to the like, what's the plan piece? There's no education or marketing expenses built into this project, and that's gonna be really crucial for its success, and so I'd be curious as to why. I'm curious about the timing, so the contract negotiations will begin currently for a start date of next spring, twenty twenty-five, does that keep it appropriately in the, in this year, or is this being split against two fiscal years because the implementation schedule doesn't speak to that?
This is for, um, two, two parts to your question, so the, the first is, some of the PR, we're actually looking to put in operations, I had a discussion with John Kaczynski about that, he had zero in PR, uh, Casella has some PR that they're trying to mobilize. I asked what their general buy is on their digital app and all of that, they're like twelve percent. I mean, we're an older community, we like the newspaper, we like paper, so we'll be looking at, uh, whether it's QR scan codes and posters or, uh, door hangers or, you know, getting the flyers out, and Casella does have some flyers that they do plan on putting out, so, uh, there is a piece that we're adding to that in the operations, and, uh, your second question was related to the overlap year. I did not submit this.
Yeah.
But we'll be looking at it, if it is, you know, this is the CIP, so where it falls into budget, um, we'll be making sure we don't miss any gaps.
Yeah, it just feels like an opportunity to either say, if you're saying that you know the contract's gonna require thirty percent down, that this year would ask for that thirty percent and next year would ask for that thirty percent.
I know, I know some of this is getting the containers on time, so you can deploy, uh, you know, and having that early engagement and, and rolling it out where you wanna low it out, roll it out, and then you don't have the containers and.
Yeah.
you've lost buy-in, you've lost momentum, so I know some of that's related to that.
For sure, it's a big move, and I think it's a timely one, like pastime probably, I'm glad to see us doing it. Um, but I do wonder about, there's been a long-ranging conversation in this community about who bears the cost of multifamily, is that commercial, um, do businesses opt into the city, and so I'd be curious to see some kind of overall cost relative to either like revenue or subsidized cost by fee. So, if I'm a business owner and you're saying, hi, the city's happy to pick this up for you and we've made it super easy, and this is the cost and you can compare it against your private contractor, um, will that cost include the purchase of those units, in which case the cost of the units that the city is purchasing would be subsidized, it'd be like a revenue note that would at least net, net it out?
I, I believe that Director Brenchik, they had started doing some studies on that, locations that we don't pick up, like some, you know, on Randall Road, some of those condos out there, you know, trying to figure out if we did include them into that, I think that maybe he can, we can, will be to find that.
So just, in the, in the like long-term debate with landlords, um, the hassle of getting your own, you know, equipment, the bins often breaking and it being hard or expensive or both to get and maintain bins for your multifamily unit, if it's part of a larger system and that landlord can make that cost savings analysis, then you might pick up customers through this process.
And that's why I think that, um, the Public Works was looking into that, that aspect already. I don't believe that he would agree on that.
I, I said it was a one-week, uh, quick download.
Yeah, you're doing great.
You're doing great, you are, you're really good.
Yeah, from a follow-up perspective, I would be really interested in knowing how that one big ticket price item might be phased between this and next.
I, I, but I think this is just, we better order these containers now, but we have to get them in.
Yeah, because you've gotta.
That's what the issue is.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta get them early and, and to make sure that you've got them when we are ready to do the, um, you know, the, the phasing in. Okay, uh, Public Works Streetlights, we have to have streetlights, traffic signals, and we have to have streetlights. Traffic signals, I, my only comment is, God, why don't they stay in sync? You know, they're supposed to be in sync, you're supposed to be able to drive up Sabata Street at thirty miles an hour, and, and if, if you hit the first one, you're supposed to hit them all, or. the first one, you're supposed to hit them all or damn close to it.
Depends on how fast you're going, I think, Lucy, but.
25.
Well, I think she has it. Ideally, we want to incentivize the people that are following the posted speed limit to be able to keep traffic moving and flowing and all of that.
And it doesn't, you know? I mean, it's, not just Sabata, I'm picking on that. But, you know, it feels like sometimes, I don't care, you stop at this light and you just get started, and the next light, you see it, it's green, but by the time you get close enough, it's red again.
I share your frustrations.
I'm sure you do.
So does the electrical superintendent and their crew. So, they are in charge of, like I said earlier, so MDOT said, you know, we're gonna formalize this. We own the streetlights. I mean, we own the traffic signals.
Right.
Not streetlights. We own the traffic signals. We're responsible to maintain those.
Right.
Right now, there are interconnects. We're working with AVCOG in Auburn because they're supposed to have a staff person actually overseeing our whole software program and how those are working. So, we have a new superintendent. Dan has been there for two years. We had a system that wasn't being maintained. We had interconnects that weren't being maintained. We have staff vacancies over at AVCOG that weren't monitoring things. So, right now, we're currently in a contract with a VHB and consulting. We've gotten our fiber network up and running and communicating properly. We're working with MDOT to upgrade some signals. LEDs were done 15 years ago, so the light's good. The issue is the PED heads, the PED buttons. So, as I said, if they get stuck, if they break, if somebody's damaged them, they put the intersection and recall, and it messes up all the coordination and all the timing.
Right.
So, we're trying to see and get notifications, both Dan, the superintendent, as well as his operators, when a PED button is stuck, get those alarms out. So, that's not quite working yet, but we hope to have that done in the next few months so we can actually, because right now, he's driving around, and it's a manual thing to try to notice it. We want to get some automated alarms so we can actually respond and keep the system functioning the way it's supposed to. Then, the plan is next year would be start looking at the actual timing and sequencing and starting to tweak things. But you're right. We agree.
Yeah, you know, it's just a, it's just a pain. You know, you're driving around and you're constantly being stopped. Okay. All right, school department. Okay. LHS Science Labs. I guess they gotta have science labs.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
So, and this might not be our purview. I'm trying to understand where this sits here versus with the school committee. But just for our edification, we have one chemistry lab at the high school? Question mark?
I have no idea.
As a parent of a high school chemistry student, I believe that's accurate. Good to know.
I would ask perhaps if there's someone on the, has somebody in high school who just recently graduated? She might know?
It's, you don't need to add that to your research list. Thank you. I guess I'm just curious or impressed. So, 200K is gonna cover the HVAC for a chemistry lab? And are we forecasting and budget what the upkeep for this chemistry lab will be over time? And maybe we'll save with new HVAC so it's being absorbed? Again, I might be over my skis and this is school board budget.
No, no, no. I mean, it's, you know, it's the.
I can send these questions to the superintendent.
Yeah, that would be good.
I can do that to find out.
Yeah, absolutely.
Want to know how many chemistry labs and.
In the 200K, is the HVAC truly going to be covered? HVAC and a chem lab's pretty expensive. So, if we only have one chem lab, it might be for real.
Well, it says current science room, so I'm gonna assume it's more than.
Yeah, and.
It's a wing. And I think the problems with the equipment and not the HVAC.
Got it. I just saw the ventilation was down here, so that's where I picked up HVAC. And then, are we budgeting, forecasting what the upkeep cost will be given the new equipment? The savings the equipment might generate might actually be covering the budget, so I'm in support of it, just to have learned some tough lessons. So, I think that'd be great.
I will get that information.
Okay. Next is Geiger Playground Edition. That was in, and I wrote, no, exclamation point. Have the parents raise funds to expand the playground. You know, I mean, there's gotta be a PTA, and I've been down into Geiger, and they've got a nice, big playground. I don't see why they need another playground. And if they want another playground, then the parents should be paying for the dad thing.
May I?
Oh, you may, certainly.
Or not amend, add to?
No, of course.
Just as.
You have to realize, I have not had a child in school in many, many, many years, so, but that's my, you know.
You're good, Lucy. So, I know Geiger to be the newest playground of our elementary schools, so I'm curious if there's a chronology.
I think you'll find that Farwell had a renovation when they did the expansion.
I think when they did, when they.
Which was after Geiger.
Okay. So, I might be off base there.
Still spanking new.
It's still relatively new.
By all things considered.
I mean, it's not that.
Yeah. So, just, I was just trying to think how the cycle flows as a learning for those of us new to the board.
Yep.
Looking at it specifically, they're not asking for a new playground because it's out of date. It's because of operational issues. That's the stated concern here.
Way to read the text.
Yeah. Just wanted to make sure that shows up in the video here. So, provide options for staff to adequately plan lunches and recesses to better accommodate teaching and learning. So.
They are saying it's also about space.
Cool. I'm kind of curious, like, yeah, yeah, what's, what's the situation here if they don't have adequate lunch space and they're solving it over a playground?
I feel like if you read it through, they're also trying to solve like outdoor learning spaces with the playground expansion, which isn't anything.
Yeah, I still think that, you know, parents should get in, should be more involved. Period. Okay. All right. Grade six through eight and central office expansion project. And I understand the 100,000 is just for, probably for planning. And I said postpone, and Kevin's, Mr. Gangi's thing was, we, Loson Public Works has no opinion on this item.
It feels really important to me that they spend that 100,000 and they tell us and the school board and the residents who vote exactly what they learn from that because we're looking at 40 million over the next two years to implement a design. There's a lot of choices to be made. And the footnote that I would put on that is like, oh, please, plan public schools. We would love for you to do that. And when we turn the page and get to the modular upgrades, maybe the planning, and Public Works is a great model for how a department could do this, maybe the planning should not be just for grade six, seven, and eight in the central office. Because if you look at some of our elementary schools and new schools and other school-owned properties that we're not doing education of traditional K through 12 students in, there are a lot of facilities and a lot of opportunities. And we're being asked to also throw down on a couple of new trailers to put outside. And so, what does it look like to do a thoughtful assessment of our needs for student teaching, administrative support programs? Plan for that and look at all of our assets, which, again, one department has already been asked to do and completed, which is to look at all of the facilities under the public school systems, purview and funding, and then plan for it. Because the last thing we want to do is come back and have a debate over 40 million dollars over two years next year and then find out snuck into the plan of which the school system continuously only, they only do three years. They will not give us a five-year. And every year, we ask for, what would it take? We know our birth rates. We know our in-migration rates. It is one of the easier areas for us to predict our future needs and forecast. And so, what would it take to plan? And please, this is a real question. What would it take to plan and provide information for a capital improvement plan for five years and not three consistently on an annual basis?
Yeah, we've asked.
Every year, every year, we ask for it. It is a huge part of our budget. It is tomorrow's future, all for supporting education. I'd love for us to not be redundant or invest in, I don't know, a trailer outside an elementary school when we're not being planful of all of our space needs. That's just, though, on the 100,000 dollar design request.
Yeah. All right. I firmly agree. Mr. Martin?
In seeing where the total cost is on City of Loson, this is gonna require, like, to go to ballot.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. It's got to be, definitely, definitely.
And until we start doing something in this community about increasing our tax base and not giving TIFs to projects that actually increase our tax burden, our budget burdens, I don't see the spiral going in the right direction.
The alternative narrative that I hear from employers looking in this area is that when they're moving in their top-tier talent to open a new place or expand a new place, the outcomes of our educational system is one of the biggest detractors in place where people who are not paying personal property taxes in this city because they have chosen to pay them in another community of which the school system gets the outcomes they want. So, at some point, we as a community either need to say, we do not value, and nor will we invest in youth in a significant way, because that's not the direction we want to go in, or we will, and we will do it in a planful way. That's why I keep getting concerned, is that we don't have a plan to get to outcomes, how to use our space in a thoughtful way. Either we're making those investments and recognizing its overall attraction of talent and of population and of the taxes that come with a population base, that brings business. Economic development model has swapped, and people don't flock to where there's jobs. Employers flock to where there's people who are happy, that based on the workforce they need.
Yeah, based on the workforce they need.
Yep.
You can spin any kind of great narrative you want, but until we do something about increasing the educational output, keeping the people in this community and making them available to employers who want to come here, all that's gonna happen is the employees are gonna look at the tax burden and go elsewhere.
Okey-dokey. District entryways and, I have no comments from now on.
Are we gonna talk about the modular ones?
Oh, okay, modular. Do I have any comments on modular upgrades? Well, you brought it up, so I didn't know if anybody else had any comments, concerns about the modular upgrades. Yes, Shannon, go ahead.
What's the lifetime of the trailers we're putting in? What's the expected use of the trailers we're putting in? How does that match with any of the big-picture movement of the development of new schools, the decommissioning of new schools, the repurposing of schools? How many trailers do we have down at Longley right now? When are they gonna?
I think, I want to say this came in front of the city council last year, and they had very similar discussions with the school department about that. I think they were trying to replace some of those that were down at Longley, was one of the locations. But I will, I'll email.
I mean, it's a request to replace a temporary stopgap measure that we've already put in and had a theoretical end of life on.
I will find out. I believe it is, but I want to make sure that they answer that.
But the 700,000 is for McMason and Montello, specifically on page 94. That's what it says. Okay. And then, we've got, next one is the district entryways and facade, Longley and Montello. I assume that is for hardening the, the entryways, you know, against somebody coming in. I don't know. It doesn't.
It doesn't look like there's.
Page 86.
Yeah, page 86.
That's because the title of it is actually District Door, Window, Roofing Renovations, and the project name is Entryways and Facades.
Right, okay. You know, to secure the building, so I assume it's hardening the buildings. It's page 96, guys. And there are several doors and windows needing replacement at the Longley campus. Doors and roofing. I think Longley campus needs more than doors and windows. They need something to keep people from breaking the windows in the back and doing all kinds of damage. Something needs to be done at that building. And it's just not, it's not doors. And then, anyways, I'm not quite sure what that entails, but, yeah, it'd be nice if we had a little bit more information on.
Mike and.
Okay.
It talks about hardening? It doesn't talk about security systems?
It doesn't. I don't think it is. I think it's just more the windows.
Windows.
I mean, that building, Longley School is old.
Let's just keep replacing them.
Yeah, yeah, so that they can get broken and more trash. Okay, sewer division. Well, that's part of the wash facility, is the first item. And rehabilitation of all sanitary sewer mains and manholes. I'm sorry, Amy, you had a question on?
I think I'm breaking with protocol here, but I don't think I'm gonna make it to the end of the meeting. I'm just really sick.
Okay.
But if I could, just comment on one thing that we haven't gotten to yet.
Absolutely, skip over.
Yeah, okay, thanks a lot. Sorry about that, guys.
No, no, that's fine.
So, page 121, the meter program. I just want to, for people who don't know, this is, and Kevin, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, this is to put more smart water meter on buildings, which is phenomenal, phenomenal, because only half my buildings have these smart meters. And in the one year since these guys activated the portal, I have preemptively saved about $10,000.
Oh, wow.
So, when there's a toilet running, this thing alerts you. So, I'm just saying, these smart meters are awesome from a water conservation standpoint and super helpful for business owners, whether you're a landlord or a business, to know immediately if you have any water issues. So, 100% in support of that.
Fantastic.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. All right, so where are we?
Sorry, supporting process. Are you leaving?
You want to leave?
I really do.
No, that's fine.
Do you want to make Lee a voting member in her absence?
Yes, yes. So, Amy's gonna leave, so Lee is, becomes a voting member at 7:55.
Feel better.
Okay. Take care of yourself, huh? Okay. So, rehabilitation of all sanitary sewer mains and manholes, that's when you're looking at, you're sending cameras down into the sewers and looking at them to make sure that they're okay or not, and deciding which ones to fix and which ones are okay.
Yes.
And lining them and whatever.
So, we have an EPA administrative order as a result of an overflow event that happened six years ago, seven years ago. So, we're just completing, we bought 150 miles of sewer pipe, everything from brick, clay, transite, and then now what we'll put in is PVC. So, we're trying to get it, finish out a full inventory of that. And then, this plan looks at the paving lists, DOT lists, other water jobs, and make sure that when we go into a neighborhood, we actually are, one, we're preventing a violation. That's our number one goal, staying compliant. Second is to make sure that when we do this work, we're doing it planned with what we discussed earlier, making sure we're getting in there before paving job or DOT.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
This is the item on page 98.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, good question. I'm just gonna relate page 98 to page 101, which is in both of these instances, and combined, we're looking at almost $2 million a year. That, as you've just described, the intentional purpose is to maintain compliance and to parse out a regular, ongoing operating activity of the city. And it's not in the operating budget, it's in the bonded capital improvement budget.
It is.
So, we put a footnote that we're gonna continue to work towards that goal. And I've, when we're done doing this line by line, and I know that we won't be all fresh as daisies at that point, I do have like two points I'd like to discuss before, particularly in case it requires some follow-up before a February meeting. in case it requires some follow-up before a February meeting.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, and then the equipment replacement program.
Jetter vector unit.
Ah, yes.
Part two.
Uh-huh. As I said, I didn't comment on these because you got to have the tools to do the work. Okay, and then next, let's see, collection system inspection and rehabilitation, that goes again with the sewer, sanitary sewers, it's all EPA and all that good stuff, correct?
We broke them out. The first one was to rehab pipes and the manholes. This one is to do the inspections.
Okay, yeah, got to do the inspection so that you can do the rest. The sewer pump stations and generator replacements.
That looks like an ongoing cost that also might be added to my footnote, obviously.
Yeah. Okay. Infiltration and inflow study. I don't understand that.
We are an old city. Most of our sewers run along brooks because it's the low-lying gravity flow areas. So II stands for infiltration and inflow, it breaks, cracks. You let groundwater in, leaking joints, leaking manholes, those take in clean groundwater, ends up at the treatment plant and it's more expensive to treat. So we want to keep our systems tight, not let groundwater in. That's what this program does, looks for ways to save money.
Okay. Or the ways to get out. It's a two-way street, right?
It can be, on the out, on the out is a violation. We've had those, so we don't want those.
No, we can't.
This is normally what we've seen is, is high groundwater table impacting.
Sure, sure. Stormwater, wash facility for that particular area. Then we have Jan's Boulevard rehabilitation and the municipal garage vehicle and equipment replacement. It's only 97,000 this year. My goodness.
Culvert replacement program, it's, most of the items in here are the same dollar amount budgeted every year, which is great and I'd like the money to go to it. It just reflects an ongoing operating cost and.
And this one's actually funded in the city operating budget.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Even better. Okay, Hartbrook, quality restoration.
110.
Again, Hartbrook is the one that's out by the industrial park, isn't it?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. And then that one flows all the way into the river?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, we got to, got to get them up, we don't have much choice. You know, yeah. Anybody have any questions, comments?
Yeah, yeah, I do.
Okay.
If we're going to bond the damn thing, let's bond it, right? Like, what, what prevents us from, if we're doing this because there's been findings and we're trying to get into compliance, why is it at $350,000 a year over a period of many years instead of the cost of a project bonded once to do the project?
Right, so some of this is just bandwidth to be able to do these projects and we have so many, we are never more regulated than we are now.
Yeah.
Jepson Brook is the same in line with Hartbrook, along with CSO, along with street paving. So really, this is just trying to normalize a level of work and also trying to meet compliance. So some of it is, you know, we just did a infiltration, which was kind of a cooling area, and that was adjacent to a large industrial area. So we're trying to get, you know, shade trees, we're replacing a culvert, so a lot of this is coordination and timing.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I mean, if we could, one big project, get it off the slate, I hear you, but it's, right now, we're dealing with just capacity issues and be able to schedule it and get it done.
Okay.
And, yes?
On Hartbrook, I've been seeing Hartbrook since 2009.
Yep.
I don't recall what the amounts were then, but just to echo, if it's going to look like an operating cost, it should be an operating cost. I know that they use fund balances, we heard about the eight million low side, 12 million high side, if we have 60 million to work with, there's 4 million to apply to a lot of these items, effectively making some of these items an operating cost. But I am a little frustrated with Hartbrook because it just seems to be ongoing and ongoing. When's it going to be complete?
So the ultimate goal, if you look down, and I think it's been outlined fairly good, but I'll summarize it for you. EPA would like this to be a natural stream and you would have salmon spawning. That's what it is. So what we have is an industrial built-up area. We have high percent of impervious, which leads to high temperatures of runoff coming into the brook. You have quality issues with that sediment, salt, other metals associated with street and paved surfaces impacting the water quality. So a lot of barriers and part of this has been a discussion with EPA and unrealistic expectation. So you're not, you're not dealing with local DEP here, we're dealing with federal regulations, people out of Boston that believe this should be a natural channel. And we're trying to either undo industrial development or trying to come into compliance, which what seems reasonable. So that's why we've done.
This time it was natural.
We're looking at the 30s to the 50s is when that industrial park was built. So you have box culverts going under the turnpike, under Lisbon Street. I've walked this whole brook. There are some sections that are look, that do our natural channel. Some of the things that we've tried to do, you're also impaired by other regulations. So you have, there's a type of bat that's protected so you can't cut trees to get access. We have a sewer interceptor that flows through this. This area in the downstream section was where one of our cross-country sewers had been missed. We're talking about manual efforts, reviewing videos, you know, coordinating paving. We missed a pipe. That pipe failed. It came out of the pipe and caused a large sewer spill. That's why the EPA came in, did an audit, we have that administrative order. So this brook has been impaired at different levels, from the upper reaches with roads and culverts, all the way through to the outfall. Take a look at it on Google Maps sometime. It's, it's trying to keep a balance and not break the budget doing it all at once, but it's also trying to be optimal, it's trying to be opportunistic when there's a parcel or something that becomes available or coordinating with a road job or something like that.
Is that the one that ran the, near, oh crap, now I've forgotten the name, the chicken place?
Hillcrest.
Hillcrest. I mean, 50, 60, well, 60, 70 years, 70 years ago? No, Hillcrest, they used, they used to kill chickens and, and they processed chickens and if that brook was, yeah.
Here's the location of Hartbrook, selling.
Yeah, yeah.
Through here.
Because I remember.
I'm not 67, so I.
I, I'm aging myself.
I'm getting close, but I'm not.
I remember going, you know, following the brook and, and we used to steal the chickens that got out of the cages and my cousin used to raise them.
You just said that on recorded.
I know I did. And, but I was probably seven or eight. And, and, well, the chickens were loose and the drivers wouldn't.
You were rescuing chickens.
We were rescuing chickens, yes, I'm sorry. And, and, I mean, it was, you know, there were, there was guts and things in the, in the, in the pond.
Not relevant to the meeting at hand.
I'm sorry.
I'm getting sick to my stomach.
All right, 795 Lisbon, 795 Lisbon Street Drain Outfall. And that's, that's great.
What page?
113.
113.
Yep, 113, that's where Sullivan Tire is.
Correct.
Or was.
Was.
Was, sorry. So, I mean, it's going to take us that long to fix that?
There are several different issues here. This project is to take care of an existing pipe within a zone that's not under that building. It's on our, our own property. It's been looked at, like Ms. Albert had called out, what are we doing for planning for, you know, increased storming events? This pipe is not sized large enough to meet design storms in the future, so they're looking to upsize this pipe as well as stabilize the embankment to be able to handle that upsized pipe. The property damage on the adjacent parcel is a different issue.
Okay. Okay.
Now, the pipe was under Sullivan?
No, this, this, there's, there's, there's two pipes. The pipe that went under Sullivan was actually a private pipe. It's actually a private pipe. This, this pipe is the city storm drain that collects from Lisbon Street and then goes to this outfall in our own easement.
So where's the outfall?
It's on Franklin, Franklin Company property. Downstream is a channel.
Because in recent years, we've already spent a ton of money on that embankment.
That was prior to me, but yes, in 2018, there was money spent to take care of that outfall.
And what's happening with Sullivan? Are they just gone?
There's a claim and discussion, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Have they determined, do you want to have a second panel?
The, the pipe that went from the, across the street, crossed Lisbon Street, and then under the building was considered private from our perspective.
Okay, so we're in the water division, wash facility, Jan's Boulevard, that's all part of a major rehab. The SCADA water treatment program, I never remember what SCADA stands for, but.
Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition is what SCADA stands for.
Okay.
It's when we automated our pump stations and no longer staffed it with people.
Are there, based on the conversations that we've had so far in the time of the evening, are there any questions from anyone on the board underwater division between SCADA and the redundant water transmission main installation, which would be the next one I hope that we would discuss? Happy to discuss ones in between, but if we can, if we can jump and no one wants to pull one out.
Yeah, there's really nothing, you know, I mean, it's all standard, regular stuff. And the redundant transmission, well, that's been in the works for discussion for a number of years.
And this is, to the earlier point, doing the whole thing all at once? Still following funding?
Yes, yes, I mean, as much as possible, yes. The city did choose to use that federal funding to be able to do this.
Right. Yeah, it, I mean, it's, it's time that we, that we did this since the current one was built in, I know the date's in here, 1899, so I think it might be time to, so I, I know that, and, and why part of this is so expensive is because it's got to be done at night, correct?
Phase one is looking to be done at night, that's already under contract, that'll get us through downtown Auburn.
Right.
And phase two is to connect, and we're going an alternate route to be able to get up to the treatment facility. That does not need to be done at night, but there are some wetlands.
Right.
There's, there's quite a distance together.
Yeah, it's, it's a, yeah, we're, we're doing, what, it's got to be a couple of miles?
Yes.
So, I mean, you do a couple of miles of, of piping and, and, yeah, 24-inch water main, I mean, that's, that's pretty, and I'm sure you've got to do a lot of, of protect, you know, build, when you're building it to protect the darn thing from, you know, caving in and all that other good stuff, especially when you're doing it along the roads.
We have a standard depth to be able to not be susceptible to frost. Our brook crossings are armored to make sure we're meeting regulations but also being resilient.
Mm-hmm.
But that also be awareful of, if you do need to do maintenance or repair, that it's accessible.
Yeah, you got to get through it.
Yep.
Right. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. And do we have?
Thank you, nice to meet you. Have a good evening.
What are we going to do now?
I have a big picture question.
Sure, go ahead, Shanna.
Thank you, Mr. Markoff, for pointing out the fun little information on the bottom of page 128, which I get, I guess I'm relating the very front of this to the very back of this, which is every year, all the department heads are asked to say, what do you got in the pipeline, how much is it going to cost? You all have a terrible job of finding a way to make that digestible for us and the general public and the council and the finance committee. And at the end of the day, you say, here is a capital improvement plan that's worth X dollars, we're only allowed to take out Y dollars, and you can bond it, we can override it, here's the process, right? That's how we started, that's what it was with city council. Then you come down here and we're looking at, so we are being asked to make recommendations of how to whittle the wish list into what we would say, yes, let's bond the debt for that to fund these important projects that are capital improvements for our community, right? That's the task and, big picture.
That is.
Cool. And in previous years, like 2020, 2023, 2024, and 2014, as well as various years unnoted related to Bates Mill, that task has been done, bonds have been approved, and we have not issued that debt. In fact, maybe we never even intended to sell it.
You asked that question, you know, you asked how much had been.
Going to keep it coming.
Pre-authorized. So it says the city has 4 million, 80,000 authorized guarantee bonds for Bates Mill that we never intended to sell.
So one version of this looks like no cuts need to be made and we don't need to issue any new debt, just go sell the stuff we've already agreed to issue. Now, I imagine if it was that simple, we already would have had that approach, but I am trying to understand the difference because, you know, and Administrator Hunter, I think, did this really well in her presentation to city council, but starts with, this is all the things that we need to fund, some of it we put into the operating budget, that lives in a different document, some of it is debt that we're going to need to bond, that lives here, some of that could go into the operating budget. If you had a prized program that we said, no, absolutely not, city council said, no, absolutely not, you could say, okay, can we, can we get that into the operating budget? Could we use already approved debt and now issue those bonds? And so when we're looking at the total number of what's being requested, how to winnow that down and make a recommendation to city council and how frankly, we in our redusidence pay and businesses pay for the plans that we would like to see, it would be helpful to hear from the finance director and the administrator about where some of those levers could be pulled and whether there's a restriction to any of these projects. So for example, we might say, absolutely don't approve Bates Mills because Bates Mill already has bonded debt approved and you can go to that bucket for it, right? Whereas something else, if we say, that project should be cut, there is no other avenue available because it can't be bonded or it has to be done by a certain date. And so it would just, there's a lot of levers that can be pulled around what money already exists, what money can already be accessed and where we make recommendations and getting a handle, because at the end of the day, we discussed a number of things today that like water, sewer, vital, please do it, maintain the roads, yep, let's, let's make sure anything below a 35 PCI is getting redone in the next two years. But then it's the economic development plans and it's the investment in, in social fabric, like the bathrooms and the trails that attract and retain people who tend to have higher incomes, pay more, and then also redistribute their dollars into the local economy. It's always a balance of what's the must-have and what's the future that, that gets us closer to not having to look at the debt every year, but we could maybe just put it in the operating budget because we had a bigger tax base. Like, that's the goal of some of these whole departments. And so it would be helpful for us to hear what funds are available and how do we make a recommendation, when we form a recommendation, about where to access existing approved funds that have yet to be sold? Where we might say, what would it take for that to be in the operating budget? Not in a tongue-in-cheek, planful goal way, but like, yeah, that could go in the operating budget.
I will have talked to the finance director and the city administrator and get you guys an answer to that.
Okay. Thanks. Michael?
With regards to these unauthorized, not issued debt and a lot of times with authorized debt that has been bonded and there's monies left over, this is something we would see at a finance committee, not a planning board, but, excuse me, getting hoarse this evening. What can happen is a request is made, or recommendation is made, and then I guess the council will approve, to remove these items from a certain slate within the world of finance. Whether they can be done legally, if they were certain stipulations to the bond, as far as if it's like $10,000 left on a $5 million bond, they'll let you just roll that into your, your operating count. Bonds that are no longer needed, and I look at this Bates Mill LLC, and I'm not sure if it's one and the same, but there used to be something either called a, I was going to say bond, bond performance, I'm not sure if that's the right vocabulary, or lien on the deed. I thought that that had been relieved a few years ago on Mill 5. So if this is the same thing, then maybe it shouldn't be here. Or if it is still here and it's accessible, there's $4 million, told you $10 million.
I'm going to ask them to explain 128, page 128 to you.
Okay.
That's my first thing that I'm going to send out.
Okay.
To get those, I don't have those answers for you, so I'll have to get those for you. I don't know.
Okay.
Okay. All right, sorry. No, go ahead. My second point, that's kind of global and fits into that kind of, maybe you should ask first categories. You know, she did a good job and I recognize that historically, we, I'm not saying we don't have a debt problem, but we, historically, we had a significant debt problem, maybe we should say. And so we instituted a new rule that each year, we would only be able to bond 80% of the previous year and 80% of, of.
Three years.
The average of the three years.
The average of the last three years.
And so at some point, that rule will put us into zero. And so at some point, that rule will put us into zero, right? Like, that's just math.
She has brought that up to the-
She did a great job.
About discussing that and maybe tweaking that rule, or at least maybe keeping it in place, but I think you need-
As a litmus test with the idea to be thoughtful about overriding.
To override that, perhaps get it not to be a super majority, but she likes to have that in place.
Yeah, and so, and she did a great job just laying that, so, but as you talk about what financial buckets are available to us, like, maybe the fourth bucket is bonds that go beyond the debt limit that we'd like to keep, of which we recommend that extraordinary piece be taken for. And I don't, I would be curious if that recommendation, the way that City Council considers it and would act in a super majority to override that debt limit, is by the overall bond number? Or if it is by saying, we believe these two projects are worth an additional one-point-four million dollars in bond and would like to see those go out and recognize that those projects are above the debt limit? Or if the debt limit is always considered as one simple number that is beyond the eighty percent? I'd be curious about the process point.
Okay. Michael?
Funny when you mention that the eighty percent rule should have a point in time when we should be at zero. Because the first rule came in at ninety-seven percent. And I remember being on Finance Committee at the time and chuckling about the length of time. I don't know, it was fifty years, a hundred years, it just seemed like an obscene number of years to get to zero. Then only two years later, it came back to us at eighty. And I asked, I said, okay, so two years ago, I said, we're offering ninety-seven, and I suggested ninety, I was laughed at, now you're asking for eighty, can I get seventy? I got laughed at. But any particular year that you have a huge excessive bond that gets approved by the five out of seven city councillors, well, that's the super rule. That just throws the whole process out of whack and you basically start all over again. I look at this chart, and this is a question that's been burning since the beginning of the meeting. So we have seven years outlined here as to what the eighty percent limit would be. And it ranges very tight, within a six-point-nine to seven-point-four million dollars. Some of those years, it's going up. So after question, did we exceed the limitation in any of these particular years? I'd be curious, that would be a question-
Yeah, I don't believe we did, but I could ask.
Yeah, I'd like to know if any of these years actually did exceed the eighty percent. I remember in the presentation, we were, it was suggested that City Council did stay within the eighty, if I got that right, and it took forty-nine percent cut in the proposed bonding. So, and since it's eighteen million dollars of, over the limitation, I think the calculation, just a wild calculation, it's going to be more than forty-nine percent. It's probably in the sixty percentile somewhere, which makes it even more difficult this year in order to accomplish that. And it ain't going to get any easier in the out years. Even if you exceed it for this year, next year is going to be a request and it's going to be difficult to bring it within the eighty percent again. And roughly, I suspect roughly once every five years, it's probably been breached at least three times since two thousand nine. So I'd be curious, maybe having a complete timeline from two thousand nine to present when it was breached and what the exact numbers were that was bonded at each occasion.
I will work on getting that information. I think that's why she brought that up for this little City Council, realizing what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, she was transparent and proactive about it, but it'd be helpful to know how that factors into the way we think about recommendations.
Okay, I don't think we want to vote on anything. We'll get the list from staff and then we'll get your-
Get some answers.
We'll get some answers from you, and then we can come up. I think what everybody should is look at the list, the information that we're given, and come up with some specifics that we can vote on on the twelfth. Because I don't want to, you know, we really don't want to go over this all over again. So if everybody comes up with a list of what, you know, you guys, everybody thinks, and sends it into Shelley, then, then we can work on, you know, from that list. We can combine it and stuff, yeah.
I'm sorry, I thought you had your hand, may I though?
Yeah, Michael?
I just want a couple of things. One is tongue-in-cheek, but performance lien is what I believe I was trying to think of. A performance lien existed on Mill Five that the city had to, we couldn't dispose of the building, presumably in two thousand and ten, as we wanted to, because that was in place. Took us by surprise. And I'm thinking that that four million dollars might have been what was in place for the performance lien. And then I heard that that lien had been taken away in recent years. So maybe it hasn't. And then the other thing is just, I noticed the ninety-eight thousand dollar discrepancy between the two pages ties up perfectly with the hydroceder and the remote terrain mower.
Uh-huh, they weren't added in, okay. Shanna?
I just, would it be possible not to get minutes from tonight's meeting, which makes a request sound more formal and like something we'd adopt? But can we get some just rough and dirty notes? So that, because when you're, when you're asking us to make the list, I don't want to recreate something that this woman has painstakingly spent the last three hours hearing us create. But rather to do that, does it feel important for us to come to agreement on the things that are vital to fund, rather than to redline a bunch of thirty-thousand-dollar items? And should our list be around priorities to maintain and not all the things to cut? Which is a different strategy, two sides to the same coin.
I think a healthier framework.
I think it's a healthier framework, and I think that it allows the council to make hard decisions with our recommendations of like, tasked with planning and development. These are areas that we feel are vital.
Sure, yeah, well, we can, we can look on the positive side instead of the negative, sure.
Top five and lower five.
Yeah, something like that, sure.
What I, what I don't want it to become, and I couldn't engage in this just as easily as anybody, is to pick out all the favorite Planning Board initiatives, just like the school board, uh, the school department has and other entities have, and just put more pressure on the council to fund our pet projects.
No, 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 I think we need to be-
I would say water and sewer is important as a planning tool.
Yeah.
Does that, is that framework match what your concern is?
Okay.
No. The water and sewer and stormwater, much of which is funded by the fee structure, and they end up increasing that fee every so many years. They basically increase it much more than they need so that it lasts over, the course of a three- to five-year period, so that, and they try to do it so that each fund doesn't actually get increased at the same time. If you're a rate payer, you don't want to see your sewer and your water and your stormwater all go up at the same time. I think it has more to do with the stuff that preceded those three categories.
Okay, well, why don't you get everybody right up their, you know, their thoughts and send it out to Shelley, and Shelley will distribute it to all of us. Okay? All right, one more thing. We need a, we need a member appointed to the Forestry Board. Who wants to be on the, who wants to be a tree?
I'd like to nominate Roger Dupree. Has he not served that, on that board previously?
Josh was-
Yeah, Joshua Nadeen was on it.
Who was it before Josh, Roger?
It was, um, Ollie.
Ollie Gudz?
Does that know you're not interested?
Yeah, anybody interested?
Well, I was going to nominate Alex, seemed interested at the last meeting.
No.
No?
I can't make it.
Yeah, I can't remember the, yeah, I can't make it because I've got a conflict on when they meet. So, um-
Is it a must and we have to pull straws, Shelley? Like, are we mandated? Pretty much.
I talked to Josh and he said-
Yeah, there is supposed to be a planning board.
Representative from the Planning Board, so I don't think it's a big issue.
Yeah, I don't-
Can we talk about the job description, like what the member is going to be asked to do?
Well, there's a job description here, it's, it's not- I don't know, go ahead and look at it. I'm, you know, I've got enough on my plate, I really, oh, we had it from last, from the last week.
No, I hate forests.
You hate trees?
Kind of do.
Okay, all right, well, think about it, and if somebody wants to volunteer otherwise, um-
Can it be an associate member?
It can be anybody.
And we have Amy not present tonight, and is there one more associate?
Yet to be named.
Can we table our appointment until our board is fully appointed at a future date?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, so, all right, so let's, we don't need to vote on a table, correct? Okay, I need a motion for the minutes, to adopt the minutes of January eighth.
I have a question.
No, no more questions, Michael.
Under Section Six.
What are you reading from?
The minutes of the January eighth meeting?
Oh, okay.
So, Section Six, Public Hearings, B, there was a motion, but no second.
Sorry, what?
There was a motion, but no second.
Yeah, I noticed it after the minutes went out and just going to show it to Lucy, but the second was Roger Dupree.
Okay.
Yeah, caught it afterwards, good catch, Mike.
Okay.
Motion approved as amended.
Okay, and second?
Second.
All right, Shanna is the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn?
Can I just make a comment before that?
Sure.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I just thought it was worth our while to thank David Hettiger for his service to the city and for staff for in support in this moment of transition.
Yes.
I think it is a perfect time.
It's a perfect time, absolutely.
And second, those sentiments.
Do we know how many, occasionally we do this in a way that puts it in public record, do we know how many years of service Director Hettiger offered to the city?
It's said twenty-five years.
Then I'd like to go on the record by offering deep gratitude for twenty-five years of leadership and service, supporting transition change and a number of large-scale plans that have moved and set a future for our city with gratitude.
Absolutely.
Much better stated. Thank you, Shanna. Sentiments to say.
How many Planning Board meetings was that?
What's the quick math on that? Twenty-five times twenty-four minus a couple holidays? That's a whole second motion.
Maybe a motion and a half.
Motion to adjourn, oh, we already did this.
I think we already did.
Okay.
All in favor?
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you next week on the twelfth.